Okay, it is 5:30, so we will call our February 13th, 2024 study session to order. Please let the record show that all board members are present this evening. At this time, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. All those who are able, if you can please stand.
(inaudible)
We all got on the same page eventually. Okay, we're moving on to item 2.03, Approval of the Agenda. The recommended action is that the Board approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I will.
Motion from Board Member Christ. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Board Member Mohammed Kani. At this time, we will vote. Board Member Byrne.
Aye.
Board Member Thomas Tate.
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. The motion passes seven nothing. This time, we'll move on to item 3.01, Public Comments. The Board of Education welcomes comments about the issues being discussed. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the public but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. The Board allows for up to 10 speakers per public comment period. The Board Chair will call on individuals in the order in which they signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by the Board Secretary. Comments must be acceptable for a business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. It's inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or the district office. If you have materials that you'd like to share, please place them to the right of the podium, and the Board Secretary will distribute those to the Board members following the meeting. This evening, we have four speakers. Our first speaker is Laura Mullins. Okay, Ms. Mullins is not here. We'll move on to our second speaker, Mary Byrne.
My name is Dr. Mary Byrne, and I'd like to make three points related to the vote taken on January 23rd regarding the motion to direct SPS's Legislative Liaison to support SB 814. I've submitted a more thorough written testimony, and will briefly address the highlights here. First, the Board is misinformed about its authority to direct the activities of the SPS Legislative Liaison. I direct your SPS's, your attention to SPS's Policy BI, which states, "If the Board is to meet its inherent responsibility to the residents and students of the community, it must vigorously work for the passage of new laws designed to advance the cause of good schools and for the repeal or modification of existing laws that impeded this cause." To this end, the Board will act accordingly as follows. Seek both direct and indirect representation of its position on pending legislation with appropriate state and federal legislators and legislative committees. That means testimonies on bills and committee hearings. Note that the Board is a body, not individual Board members, has an inherent responsibility to seek direct representation of its position on pending legislation. Second, the Board is uninformed about the rationale and implications of SB 814. The Board refused an opportunity to be educated about this important matter. As a result, your questions prior to your vote to reject the motion rang hollow and reflected negatively on the district's SPS United campaign. Statewide, superintendents report a problem with the validity and reliability of the Missouri Growth Model calculation. If the current MSEP 6 is fully implemented, teacher evaluations and district accreditation scores will likely be negatively affected by an indefensible scoring system. SB 814 offers relief from a non-transparent and unresponsive Department of Education. Finally, the Board may have been disinformed regarding the legitimacy of MSEP 6. On September 26, 2023, this Board revised Policy BBF to align with MSEP 6 L6, which requires local Boards to delegate their school operations authority to the superintendent. I've attached a white paper that argues that MSEP 6 L6 violates state law and is therefore invalid. Other parts of MSEP 6 may be invalid as well. I'll conclude with these remarks. The Board should reprimand the administrative official who misinformed the Board about its role in shaping state legislation, and publicly apologize to the Board member who acted according to long-existing Board policy to bring her motion regarding pending legislation forward. Board members should undertake actions to resume their statutory responsibilities to determine school operations and direct the SPS Legislative Liaison to lobby legislators for the repeal of MSEP 6 while the Board seeks a declaratory judgment on the matter. I thank you for listening this evening.
Thank you, Mary. Our next speaker is Carl Hurd.
Good evening, Dr. Lathan and School Board Members. Let's talk about increasing student achievement. Let's talk about substantially increasing student achievement. Let's talk about increasing it up to the state average and beyond. Let's talk about competing with Nixa and Oshark and Republic and Willard and Stratford and Rogersville. The most important factor that drives student achievement is motivation. IQ is important, but it's not the only thing. Motivated students set the learning curve high. Motivated students are not discipline problems, and they have a positive effect on other students. For example, a Northside Elementary School had a transfer student that was causing trouble. A student at this elementary school told the transfer student, "We don't do this at York." Motivated students do more homework than is assigned. Motivated students have better attendance. This is very helpful for your school budget. Motivated students motivate teachers. Each group motivates the other. Can you imagine 24,000-plus motivated students and 3,500-plus motivated employees coming to work each day? So what is the solution? Many times, solutions to major problems are so simple that a student can solve them. Perhaps you have heard of trucks getting stuck at the overpass on Grant and Commercial. They were having trouble pulling the trucks out, so a student said, "Just let the air out of the tires." So, the solution, we'll start here. The solution is within the boundaries of the Springfield school system. In other words, it's in your own backyard. But I see, I have 45 seconds, and that's not enough time to fully share with you the total solution for this. So I would like the opportunity to come back at some future time and perhaps have another shot at it. Thank you for listening, and how motivated are we? Have a good evening.
Thank you, Carl. Our final speaker this evening is Jasmine Allen.
Hi. Good afternoon. I come to you as a teacher of the district, I come to you as a parent of someone in the district, and as a community member that's involved in many different organizations. So I'm going to share an experience with you. As a teacher of over a decade in Title I schools, and as a student that some considered trouble, I actually had a Form B hearing. I have seen the power of relationships, as well the power of curriculum, has on students. Currently, in my opinion, I feel we are prioritizing by any means necessary, increase test scores. And what is that causing, right? I also would like to know, since there has been a lack of training for the past, I believe, two years, we just restarted our, I think it's called belonging training now, what's the link between that, right? Because if teachers do not know how to deal with different demographics, you know, how are they, how are, and also the consequences being punitive, right? What do the students learn from them being punitive, right? We get them out, and they come back. Typically, they're repeat offenders. So I would like the data on those that are repeat offenders. What are they learning? Who's teaching it? Also, I'd like to know, if some are underreporting to fix the data, are the marginalized still being funneled in the school-to-prison pipeline, right? Furthermore, I'd like to talk about some recommendations I have, right? So this isn't for discipline, it's been big, right? And also cultural competence, I'm backtracking now. Dami, she does a, I don't know if I mispronounced her name, but she's done cultural competence training with the City of Springfield, the Chamber of Commerce. I wonder if the Board or any leadership has partaken in this cultural competence training that's a day long, not just two hours after school. I think there's great value in that if the City of Springfield is participating in it, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. So my suggestions are, so mentors for those with challenging behaviors, exhibiting big behaviors. Behaviors is a form of communication. What are students communicating, right? Who else is measuring that? Is that just principals? I know a friend of mine, she teaches up in Michigan, I believe, her role is a mentor and a coach, so she works directly with teachers and students, right? Like, maybe we could get some of her coaches or other staff also helping with these behaviors so it's not on everyone's back. So I would like us to move to a collective impact model, kind of over food, storytelling life, because the power of a story can really help shape minds. And I really appreciate all your guys' service to our community, and have a great evening. And I have to run, I would stay the whole time, so don't think anything. Bye.
Thank you, Jasmine. That concludes our public comment portion of our meeting. We'll move on to item 4.01, Contracts, Agreements, Change Orders, and Bids. The Board was provided this information prior to the meeting. This evening, the information's being brought just for informational purposes. We will vote on these items at the February 27th, 2024 regular meeting. Are there any comments or questions from the Board that haven't been answered prior to this evening? Okay, seeing, oh.
I wanted to ask a few questions on K-Cob from the list of 15,000 to roughly half million. The first item on the list is on Scholastic Education for $396,670. The description says that it's for K-5 summer reading packs and workbooks, and I was really pleased to hear what type of workbooks they were, and so I just wanted to have Dr. Lathan review that, so that I can take some notes.
Okay, so just to share, and also feedback that we received, I think at the last meeting around, for the past several years, can you hear me now? All right, how are you doing this evening? So for the past several years, we have distributed backpacks filled with books for students to take home for summer reading. It was suggested at the last Board meeting that we consider also adding math. And so students will have an opportunity this summer to receive backpacks. K-5 students, not only reading novels, but they'll also receive math workbooks. And then we've identified additional students to receive additional workbooks, and so they will have a structure throughout the summer. So I continue to appreciate the Board being supportive of encouraging reading to address summer loss throughout the summer, but then, like I said, this year also adding the math components.
Thank you. The next two questions have to do with MediaCom and Provision Data Solutions. So on MediaCom, so this is just the internet that we receive in all our buildings. Am I understanding that correctly?
So MediaCom is our wide-area network. It's actually what connects all the buildings to our data center, actually hosted here at Craft's, and then it goes out to the internet. So it's actually what creates our entire educational network.
Okay, so this isn't internet, it's what brings it all together?
Correct.
This is on top of just internet provider?
Correct.
And who is our internet provider? Is it MediaCom?
No, it's actually MorNet, which is a state consortium.
Okay, I thought, okay. Help me understand the numbers here. So I understand that we approve a set amount, but then we have reimbursement?
Correct.
So it says this will result in a total expense of $76,800. Okay, I got to get my calculator out. But when I added 20% to that and then multiplied it by three, it didn't come out to 355. Can you just help me understand how these numbers, where they come from?
Yeah, so, and I'll touch base a little bit more in my presentation later on E-rate, but it's eligible and ineligible services in the same bid. Eligible services are reimbursed at the 80% rate, but ineligible services, we do not receive reimbursement. Ineligible services for this would include things that do not directly impact instruction. And so we have a couple links out to, I believe the Naterium is one example, where we don't have instruction happening during the day as specified by the Federal Commission for Communications. And so that's an ineligible service, and so it's not at the same rate. So on the wide-area network one, it is not a straight 80%, it's 80% of those eligible services.
Okay, got it. Now it makes sense, because that amount is more, okay.
Yeah.
So is the 355,000 the amount after the E-rate? Or so after we, after we receive the rebate?
That's the pre-reimbursement. So that is the entire cost of the contract. The 76,000 is the post-reimbursement. So that's what the district's expense actually will be.
So the district's expense will not be 355,000?
Correct, yeah.
It will be 76,800 times three, well, annually 76,800.
Correct.
Okay. So I, can I assume that that is the same explanation for Provision Data Solutions, why those numbers don't jive?
Very similar, yes.
Fantastic. Can you just real quick tell me what firewall support services are? What is that pay for?
So our district's firewall has a variety of kind of security services. They are very strict about which services actually are eligible for reimbursement, and this next round of E-rate, we're hoping that they expand that quite a bit. So what you'll actually see is a very limited amount that is eligible for reimbursement. I forget the exact amount, I think it was 30,000 or 40,000 roughly, that we receive in reimbursement on that specific piece.
That's why our cost is so high.
That's why it's much higher.
Okay, so I have an idea of what a firewall is for my home, but talk to me about what a firewall means for a school district.
Yep, for a school district, it sits right between the internet and our network. So it's constantly monitoring the, and monitoring by also filtering, internet traffic. And so it's making sure that there's no malicious attacks happening, it also monitors and will actually filter out specific categories within the district's network as well, so.
So it's protection against cybersecurity?
Yes.
And it's also content moderation?
Yes, yeah.
So every, you know, students can't just go wherever they want?
Yeah, that's also on top of the filtering that we have on Chromebooks and iPads.
Which is, remind me the name of that?
GoGuardian.
GoGuardian, okay. So we have GoGuardian and Provision Data Solutions together protecting our students and our staff.
Yes.
Okay, got it. And then my last question is, I guess halfway down, and this, I guess would be for Stephen, on Field Trip. Can you, so this is $85,000. Can you explain this a little bit better?
Yes. So in support of collaborative culture and the development of a new brand identity for the district, we just went through an RFP process where we went out to bid for agencies to submit proposals to help us lead that effort. Ultimately, it will be a brand-new brand identity for the district. We interviewed a variety of agencies, and the Field Trip was the one that was selected by that panel. They will be in the market, conducting engagement studies with our stakeholders, three days of various focus groups, and they will help us develop that brand identity. It's more than a new logo, it is very much-
Yeah, I guess I don't know what a brand identity means.
That's right. So what you will see, the most visible part of a brand identity is the logo, but what it reflects is the research that goes into it. They will be studying our strategic plan, engaging with stakeholders, and the new brand identity will reflect where we want to position ourselves as the district moving forward. One of the things we were really excited about with this particular agency is, they had already done their research when they came to interview, and they had looked at districts across this region, and they did an initial analysis of where we are and how we're positioning ourselves versus how other districts position themselves and how their brand identity is reflective of the strategic plan and the goals of the organization. We were very impressed with their commitment to doing this work and to engaging stakeholders through the process. So if approved, this would begin in March and would go through early summer.
Okay, so the little logo guy is going to change, but when was the last time we branded? Like, so how long has he been around? You might not know this.
It's been at least 25 to 30 years.
Yes. So the little guy's been around for 25, 30, so, okay.
That's right, that's right. And so what this will do is, they will engage in the process, and they will come forward with not only where we see ourselves currently as a district, but where we want to go, and they will use the strategic plan as a guide to help get us there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from Board members? And again, as a reminder, we'll vote on this during the February 27th regular Board meeting. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item 5.01, Board Policy Adoptions and Revisions. Again, the Board has had an opportunity to review these Board Policy Adoptions and Revisions. These policies will be brought forward for a vote at the February 27th, 2024 regular meeting. There any questions that haven't been answered that Board members have?
There are two versions of Policy JFCI that were offered. So in addition to approving the revision of the language, we will have to adopt one or the other. One of them is suggesting that we do drug testing with student athletes whose participation does not include academic credit, and one of them does not, is that correct? Do you know?
One's for random.
But they're both random.
So one of us random testing in condition of participating in Misha activities, that's version one, and the other one does not require random testing for Misha participation.
And it just requires testing if there's suspicion that the student is under the influence of drugs or alcohol?
That's the sake.
Yeah, so, yeah, you're correct. Version one is random, version two is only under reasonable suspicion.
No, we're not voting today.
Right, but when we do, we're voting on one or the other.
One or the other, yeah.
Well, that seems very strange. Usually, things are presented to us as a recommendation, not a which one. So how do we decide which one we're voting on?
So I brought it up because in the policy reading, it says that the policy was previously supplemental, it wasn't a part of the traditional Board policy packets. And apparently, because of increased use of marijuana in particular, I think maybe drug use overall, these have been recommended as primary policies with one or the other. Now, I just did a little random searching on the internet to try to discover, you know, what positions were across the country, and I think the random drug testing part was somewhat problematic, except for in the case of students who participate in sports, because apparently there has been some case law already regarding that, and that students who participate in sports re-give up some of their rights to privacy as a condition of playing on sports. Whereas, random drug testing in and of itself has not been supported by school districts because it has not been reconciled in the courts.
So which one are we being asked to?
Either one.
The Board will have to decide which one we would like to adopt, if any at all.
How do we plan, I don't ever remember this being presented to us in this sort of way. So are you saying, next time we have a Board meeting, we're going to say, okay, which one of these do we want to vote on?
Well, we're talking about it now.
I would expect, yeah, Board members to do a little deep dive, but we can reach out to Misha, or not Misha, to MSBA and see which one they have a preference.
This came from MSBA.
Right, right.
What they recommend is that we speak to legal counsel, whether or not we want to do one or the other.
Wouldn't it be more typical for Dr. Lathan and her staff to make a recommendation to us of which one?
Yes, but we wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to see the recommendations that came from MSBA, and then to hear the conversation tonight, and then to come back with a recommendation at the final meeting. But we were just trying to make sure everything is transparent, and so that you see the options in front of you.
So will you all be making a recommendation to the Board?
Yes, we'll be making a recommendation, but just in case someone feels strongly about one version over the other, I wanted to be able to, all Board members to be able to weigh in.
Dr. Lathan? It also ties into JFG, because there's a, I'm going to come back to this, there's a statement in there that says, "In accordance with law, the district may implement a random student drug testing program for students in extracurricular activities." It's interesting, because I read JFG before I looked at JFCI and JFCI II, and I wrote down, can we strike extracurricular activities out? Because, so this goes even beyond random drug testing. This just goes into just plain old random student drug testing. And I know that this would be an unpopular position in the public sector, but this is very popular in private schools that we are competing with. In my opinion, my understanding is we don't currently test at all. Do we test any students currently? Not even ones that we suspect, right?
This is a question maybe for Dr. Wynn, wherever she is. Are we still offering breathalyzers to students that are denied? If the principal believes you are intoxicated and we have reason, or they have reason, to go on and make a disciplinary decision, if the student, it used to be that if the student repeatedly said, "I am not intoxicated," then a breathalyzer was offered at that point to prove one way or the other. I don't know if that is still on occasion or not. Do we still do that? I'm asking.
But that would be for alcohol.
Right, but I just thought the question went along.
Yeah, do we do, do we do drug testing, urine testing, for illicit drug use?
Urine testing?
Or any form of testing?
Not random testing.
Or not even random, just any testing?
Yes, and-
Just if, just-
Just for alcohol.
So the answer is yes, Dr. Wynn? Did she say yes?
So if a student is suspected of using drugs, do we do any testing if there's a suspicion? No, it's just alcohol, guessing, because that's easier to test for.
Also, just from the court's perspective, from what I've been able to find, the problem with testing for some of the other substances is that they can be in your system for some period of time, and whether or not you were actually intoxicated or impaired at that time would be a matter of some level of judgment, so the courts have not settled on that, as far as I've been able to find so far.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we don't currently test students?
Correct.
Okay, well, then it makes these policies completely irrelevant. So maybe we don't adopt either. Okay, so, but in my opinion, if we were to ever test, if that is a path we want to take, I think the welfare of the students would be independent of what group they belong to. And by group, I mean whether they are in extracurricular activities or not. That's just my opinion.
And I don't think it makes it irrelevant, and it, these particular policies are specific that it's not extracurricular activities, it's those that are governed by Michigan State High School Activities Association, that have that as a condition of participating in those activities, not necessarily just extracurricular activities. While we have not had a regular policy for testing prior to now, these would have a provision in policy to test under certain circumstances. And so I don't know that because we don't test now, it's not relevant. I think it's relevant because we would be creating a policy that would allow for testing of either some or none of our students, under certain conditions.
I agree with Board Member Thomas Tate. I don't think it's irrelevant that just because we don't have the Board policy now that we can't adopt a Board policy moving forward. And yeah, I also understand that perhaps there's a legal issue with random drug testing of any student who walks through our doors, which is why it's specific to those who are engaging in athletic activities or Misha activities. engaging in athletic activities or Misha activities.
I think I read in one of these policies, it kind of seems like the stance is, we allow a lot of flexibility of the staff and leadership to make judgment calls based on what they witness or behavior or whatever. So that's, it sounds like what Mrs. Brunner was just saying is, would be a reflection of that. You have other indications of if a student is intoxicated, smell, possession, whatever. But if they continue to say that they're not, so I guess, it sounds like the stance has been, we use other methods to determine, and there are still minors in our care, so we can exert some sort of judgment or even punishment based on, we try to give ourselves that flexibility, and that prevents us from having to go into what would be a very, well, I would just say, a very problematic system for us to try to create and oversee some sort of drug testing system, and whatever people and that takes, and how you're going to collect that and invade their privacy to collect that. It sounds like if we can have ways to avoid all of that is in our best interest, and it sounds like that's what we've done up to this point. So why, so I guess now is it, this is just being pushed from MSBA, and we've always said, no, thank you, we don't want to go that far, we'll handle it.
MSBA, even in this particular policy, continues to say that best practice is that we utilize multiple tools for determining whether or not a student is intoxicated or impaired, that testing is just one of many tools, like you said, that could be utilized. This policy just would allow for drug testing in the event that the other methods don't work.
But we, what would, at what cost to the district would it be for us to open that door to allow for that? I mean, that doesn't sound like a very easy thing. Or do we just work through some sort of third party, I guess, and pay per time that we need to?
Some districts contract with a third party, like you would do for when you send your employees to be drug tested, or it would be a contract.
There could also be a deterrent factor here, that the district has the opportunity to test, and it's in our policy, and a policy can be pointed to that perhaps is a deterrent to the student from.
That's really where I was going with.
Sure.
That, you know, if the policy says you may, doesn't mean you're going to, but that you may. Does that make sense? And I like the fact that in JFG, I had not noticed this before, but there is a drug detection clause. I really like that. I mean, we do have a serious drug problem, and I'm not singling our district out, but those are the times we live in. So shoring up our policies helps us when we need it.
I agree.
I would agree with that, but there's a lot of issues with this. For example, if we do it independently, and we have a practice and a procedure, and following those procedures, or if we do a third party, and then you have, as an example, like a five-panel quick determination on whether somebody's under the influence, depending on the type of drug that it is, then you have a 10-panel, then you have a 12-panel, and these are different types of screenings that you would do in order to identify a particular source of a drug that they may be under the influence. And to Sharita Tate's point, I mean, it's like marijuana. Marijuana can stay in your system for up to 30 days, as I've been in practice, not with marijuana, but. It comes down to sending the sample on to a laboratory, and then the laboratory conducts an analysis, and you can tell from the lab results on the potency, and then that helps you define specifically, or at least narrows it down to whether in fact an individual was under the influence at the time that you have taken a sample. So there's a lot to be considered here when we want to do randoms or sampling period. Just wanted to throw that out there for us to consider.
So it sounds like there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of interest here in just random drug testing, and you're gonna take that information and come back to us with a, and consult legal, and come back to us with a recommendation on this?
Yes, on version one or version two, just for JFCI one.
Or neither.
Or neither, yes, right, but everything else is still the same.
And just to clarify, if I can ask a question.
Unless you have edits.
If I can ask a quick question, just to clarify, that we do not require random drug testing as a condition of participating in Misha activities.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Misha doesn't require it?
That one I have to ask.
I mean, if we're not doing anything.
There would be part of this thing if they, if they did require it. Because reading this, it says, as a condition of participating in Misha activities, that there are districts out there that don't require drug testing as a condition of participating in Misha activities. I don't know if it's a choice or what.
That would be us right now. We don't require.
We should adopt version one, is what it's saying. Okay. Or we should. Start random drug testing for Misha.
Any further comments from board members? On this policy or other policies? We'll stay with this policy for now. Any further comments?
If I might, please, just really, what is our ultimate goal? And if we can define what that goal is, then we can determine whether we want to move forward or not. If Misha's not actually requiring it, I mean, I think that if Misha was requiring it, then I think we would be doing that practice right now, and we're not.
That's where I was getting at, and wanted to know if we were doing, if they were requiring it.
I suppose, I mean, just speaking personally, you know, as a board member, certainly while respecting the privacy of the students who are in our schools, I also think that there's value to identifying if a student is struggling with that, and getting the resources that they need earlier rather than later in life. So, and the deterrent factor as well.
And additionally, just the policy does allow, has additional, particularly, I'm looking at version one, which does not require random testing. It does allow for reasonable suspicion drug testing. That can be one of many tools used to discipline students, but a positive drug test is not required in order to discipline a student. There could be other tools that are used.
Okay, I'm gonna say one last time. Just because we say we're gonna do random testing, doesn't mean we're gonna do it. But I like the idea that we can. If, we might get to, you know, they're children, and if that's what it takes to protect them, fear.
Does any, without digging through this again, does anyone know if we do allow for drug testing, does it speak to parental consent? Is that a requirement?
Not for, if it's a district, if the board, if it's a board policy, no.
But just like if I were pulled over by the police for suspicion of alcohol, I can refuse a breath test. I don't have to have that done. And if a person was my lawyer, they may tell me, don't do that, even if you were or were not, just don't do that. That may be a recommendation from a lawyer. I would hope, I would wonder if, you know, that parental consent would be something that we would want to consider if we were going to do any type of random testing. Again, I'm just thinking through all of the possibilities.
With the consequence being that you would lose your driver's license versus the consequence here is you cannot participate in Misha activities.
I think that's a good question, though, from Kelly Byrne, that if somebody's gonna participate in sports, and it is gonna be a requirement, then the sign-off would have to be with the parent that they would consent to that. That's what I would think. Otherwise, they're not gonna play the sport.
And just to add to all of that, I think when I read the legal precedent, it was based on, they allowed it because it was both an issue of safety for the student, but also safety with regards to playing a sport where they can get more injured because of their being under the influence of something. So that's why they chose specifically the sports, Misha sports, versus the whole random population of students.
I have a question. Do we still require students to sign those eligibility, citizenship eligibility cards to participate in any extracurricular activity? I'd be interested in seeing what one of those cards looks like, and, not right now, but at some point, I'd like to see how that's written. Because parents do, when they sign those eligibility cards, the student signs it as well as the adult, the significant, the guardian, if you will. Thank you, oh, thank you, 94. I'll take a look at it. But that's where the consent would come in. It would be given there to agree to it as part of the eligibility. Thank you, board member McCoskey.
You're welcome.
Okay, further comments on the student alcohol and drug testing policy proposals? And again, I understand Dr. Lathan and her team will come to a recommendation, if any at all, about which policy they suggest the board adopt, and we will vote on February 27th on that. We also have a number of other board policy recommendations. Are there further comments from board members on those additional policies?
Can we do GBEBB? I had a question about that one. That's the employee alcohol and drug testing?
Yes.
I have a question about, this is for drivers. It talks about the comprehensive program will include pre-employment drug testing and reasonable suspicion, comma, random, comma, and post-accident testing. And so as I read this, this isn't a may, it's a shall. The program shall. Are we random drug testing or bus drivers? I wasn't aware of that. What is our current procedure?
Yes, we are.
Who, oh, there we are, Travis. Okay, so, and the reason I ask that, because I thought we talked about this before we did the student ones. So how do we do that? Do we send it to a lab? Is it a third party? Can you talk to me about that?
Yeah, exactly right. They, a random list is chosen, and they're required to be at the transportation center at a specific time. They do the drug testing, it's a third party, they send it off, get the results, but it is random every single month.
Is it a urine test?
It is.
Is it a, how many, well, how many panels? What is the test like?
I don't know the detail on that.
You don't? So, I guess what I'm saying that, we have some precedent, we're doing this, not for students, but we're doing it for adults. So there's, we have, we've dabbled in it, I guess.
It's a requirement from the Department of Transportation.
Department of Transportation.
Yes.
Well, I just didn't, A, I didn't know we were doing that, and B, it was gonna change my whole attitude towards JFCI, because I thought, wow, is this just brand new? Apparently, we're doing this. Thank you, that's the only question I had about that.
Any further questions or comments from board members on policy GBEBB?
Yes, I have a comment on this one, and I think this applies to other ones too, and I've said this before, I may be the only one that feels this way, but we keep getting these policies where they keep messing around with pronouns. What, why, it has nothing to do with it. And I would just like to say, stop, whoever this attorney is that keeps doing this, stop striking his and her and replacing with their, or striking his and her and leaving it blank. Please find a better use for your time.
It does provide more concise language.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, any other policies that board members have questions about?
Can we do KK next?
Sure. Policy KK.
That's the visitors to district property and events. So I have a question and a concern. The question I have is, oh gosh, how am I gonna try to? Under registered sex offenders and persons prohibited on or near district property. It says, sex offenders required to be listed in the Missouri Highway Patrol Sex Offenders Registry or who have pled guilty, et cetera, et cetera. And at the end of that sentence, it goes on to say, regardless of whether those activities are held on or off district property unless access is required by law. What is that? What is access is required by law? Is that the transportation of a student to school and back to home by the guardian? Because that comes up in the next paragraph, where it says on the bottom, despite the prohibitions in this section, the superintendent may grant permission for a parent, guardian, or custodian of a student to be on district property for limited purpose of attending meetings with district staff or in other situations where the student may benefit. I'm not seeing transportation here, so does transportation fall under unless access is required by law?
It's on page three, the top paragraph.
Yeah.
Second sentence, third sentence.
What's your question?
Well, I read over this twice to find that, to make sure that we allow for transportation. So, yeah, so does that fall, what is, what does this access required by law mean? Like, I don't know what that is.
I suppose if you vote at a school, you should have access to that school on voting day. But I don't, I don't know.
A question for legal.
Yeah.
Yeah, because are not allowed on district property or transportation or at district activities. But then the next paragraph talks about how the superintendent may grant permission for them to come for attending meetings. But are the parents or whomever is taking care of this child, who may be a sex offender or pled guilty or all that stuff, can they come onto the property to bring their child or their student? Are we gonna allow for that?
So when a parent needs to come on to district property, that is a registered sex offender, they have to send a request to me for approval detailing the date, time, the event, and then request permission. Then we send it over to our student discipline office, and then also notify school police. So there's behind the scenes, a lot of things that happens to grant that time. And then we're monitoring the time that they're on the campus and the time that they leave. But we will follow up as it relates. Only one I can think of is voting, because they are able to go vote at a site. But this is for, the other ones that I grant permission to are for events. And even if they're a parent in another district and they're coming, they still have to send a request to me.
So they would send in a request at the beginning of the year, saying that I'm gonna be dropping?
For every event.
So for every single day that they're dropping their student off and picking them off, they have to make a request?
For the event, because I want to check on the one for dropping them off.
Transportation, right, okay.
For transportation.
Thank you. And then the other question I had, or concern I had, had to do with disruptive conduct. It says, "If a visitor's conduct becomes disruptive, threatening, or violent, the superintendent, principal, or a designee of either, may require the visitor to leave." The superintendent or designee, it used to say, "may inform the visitor that he or she is not welcome back," but now it says, "may prohibit the visitor from district property indefinitely." And it goes on to talk about how the superintendent may make exceptions. So I'm uncomfortable with designee, and I just, I just want to have an opportunity to talk to you guys about this. You know, at the end of the day, parents are humans and principals are humans, and I think we all know that if there's one thing that can get a parent go from zero to 100, from an emotional standpoint, it would be their children. Mrs. Brunner's looking at me, smiling, you know what I'm talking about? So things can become charged in the moment, especially if a parent thinks that their child is being harmed, or there's a perception, right? It's, we're dealing with perceptions here. I'm a little concerned about this, because, you know, people say things, and then it's how they're interpreted. What I don't want to do with this policy is jeopardize the relationships and the partnerships we have that we are trying to forge and strengthen with parents. I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes.
So that same line does say, or for a specific amount of time, it's not just indefinitely, one, and two- one. And two, you know, when we talk about some of the discipline issues that our teachers and administrators, building level staff have, right now, many of those issues aren't just the kids, it's their parents.
No, I get that.
And those parents are, you know, cause many teachers and administrators to be fearful for their safety, not just their kids. And so, I think it is in the best interest to protect, you know, the people there from parents. I don't necessarily think, you know, there could be an incident where it can be indefinitely, but, you know, it also says for a specific amount of time. So I think it just allows for some leeway, some decision-making. I don't think the intention is just to start banning parents indefinitely, but I think there is a space for that to happen in certain circumstances. And this language would allow for some decision-making to be made.
Yeah, I'm just uncomfortable that this is subjective, and there's no clause for, hold on, let me think of, there's no recourse for these people if they think that this was unjustly done. In the moment, two people can get into it, and I think we've all seen it, or perhaps experienced it. I think there has to be, I, as a board member, from a policy perspective, would like to see some recourse. It may or may not involve the board, but there has to be some pathway for an individual who feels that this was unjust. I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying it could be.
And I think Dr. Lathan has a.
Is there a procedure for this?
We have a process. Our Director of Student Services handles these. We start with warning letters, trespass letters. So there is a process, that it starts from the building principal making that contact. And the process of the recourse is all the way up to the superintendent appealing the decision that was made from the building level and by the Director of Student Services as it relates to a warning letter, trespass letter, and then indefinite. There's, not in my three years that I've been here, has anyone ever been indefinitely suspended, but.
No, the trespass letters we issue are good for that year. They're good for one year.
So, I suppose what I'm trying to get at is, let's say, a parent is on the phone, they get upset for whatever reason, and they say, blip, 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 blip. Is it possible that somebody will knock on their door and say, you can't come to school for the rest of the year?
Possibility based on what you say. I mean, and I think that's consistent with anywhere in life. If I'm at Price Cutter and I say some certain things, so we have to make sure we are protecting our students and our staff. But there, we have had some safety incidents where we, the police did have to go out and make sure that there were not guns, you know, when someone threatens with a gun and they use, like I said, certain words, our police officers will go out and check to make sure they're not coming to the campus to do any harm or to any of our central office locations.
Okay, so there has to be an intent to harm, or not just for getting upset?
Well, not just getting upset, but there are certain levels that, like I said, we look at the severity of the situation, we take all matters, and like you said, right, sometimes people can get upset the child scored an F, and, or they didn't make the varsity team over the JV. They say some things, and there's a process. Our administrators do an excellent job, and our coaches are trying to work with parents around that. But there are times that we have to make tough decisions to keep everyone safe.
I think we need to give some deference to the reasonableness or the reasonable actions of the people who are in these schools. Obviously, if the board starts hearing that every parent who calls up and is upset that their child didn't get an A has been banned from the school indefinitely, that would be a problem. But here, I mean, I just see it as strengthening the language, because right now, it just says that the superintendent may inform the visitor that he or she is not welcome back. And that just, to me, doesn't have a lot of teeth to it. We're strengthening it, saying you can prohibit the visitor from re-entering district property.
And just like the policy for, you know, maybe having a policy for random drug testing may cause them fear, maybe this will help them more accountable for their words and their actions, and they know that there's a possibility that they could be banned indefinitely.
Can I get a clarification, please? Dr. Range?
Yes.
When you say one year, we're talking a school year?
We're talking that academic school year, so.
Okay, so, we're starting in, what about the summer, when there's activities?
We would probably, I mean, in my experience administering these, we would pull them and have a conversation, a reset conversation with that person to say, hey, we're going to pull this, we're expecting the behavior to get better. The only time we trespass people is when it's, we've had multiple warning letters given to somebody, saying, we've warned you several times about your behavior. Or two other incidences would be when it's profanity that was used at a really high level, or there were threats of violence. Thank you.
There are other board comments or questions on policy, the proposed policy changes to policy KK? Okay. There any other policies that board members would like to review or have questions regarding?
I would like to ask regarding JG and JGR1, just for a summary of what's going on here.
JG?
They're tied together.
JGR1.
And as I read them back and forth, I'm just not real clear on what's, what the history of this is. It kind of explains some of the history, and then it says what it's trying to do, and is referencing both of these policies. And it would just be a lot clearer to me if I heard a verbal summary explanation of what, what we're trying to accomplish with these policies.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I take a couple minutes to give some history? Mr. Burn, would that be okay?
I don't care who the explanation comes from.
You would like to use your time, and you feel comfortable.
I do, I would. I think it's worth understanding the history here. So in February of 2015, the district administration and a board-appointed liaison reviewed and revised the entire Section J of the SPS policy. Section J relates to all things student-related. Section J in its entirety was sent to the MSBA legal team, who then provided feedback, and then Section J was entirely revised. Contained within Section J is JG, as you see right here, which also include JGAP1, which is Administrative Procedures 1. JGAP1, which still exists in the 2015 copy, if you go back in board docs, outlines our current scope and sequence. It was within the body of the policy as an administrative procedure that was voted on. Now, it's not the same scope and sequence, right? It's the same structure with the outline, but the words are different. And then in December of 2016, JG was revised to update changes related to bullying. In that iteration, JGAP1 is referenced, but it is absent, although it does say that the board approved it, while the actual content is absent. Again, in February of 2017, JG was revised. This time, JGAP1 is also referenced, but still remains absent from the file. The next time the policy JG is revised is in September of 2020. This time, the policy was revised to update and address equity issues and off-campus misconduct. At this point, JGAP1 or JGR1, any reference to them is dropped off. So they don't exist, and they're not referenced, which is what this editor's note is all about. But then, the last time it was revised, and it came to the board, in August of 2021, I was serving on that board at the time. Interestingly enough, JGR1 pops back up into the body of that policy, and that's the policy that we're looking at right now. JGR1 is stated, but it doesn't exist. So currently, in the form that we have, the last edition of JG, JGR1 is indeed referenced, but it does not exist. So, and to be clear, why did we revise this in August of 2021? The changes that were made had to do with illegal discrimination, harassment, sexual discrimination, tobacco use, and language-restricting student confinement. So that's what changed, but nothing else changed. So I, for one, I'm really happy to see that we're going back to the way that a lot of the regional districts are doing JG and JGR1, which is including essentially some, some addition of the scope and sequence, you know, not exactly, but some version of it, as a board policy rather than an administrative procedure, which is my understanding where it lives right now. So to that extent, when, in our conversation, I'm just going to throw it in here, the only suggestion I have is that we move one paragraph where it says prohibited conduct down to go after the blue highlighted area. It just would, it would flow better. I think when MSBA brought, so everything that's in blue is our current JG, and they're trying to marry the MSBA JG and the SPS-tailored JG. Do you understand what I mean by SPS-tailored? We tailored it because we never had, we never adopted R1. We chose not to adopt R1. We chose to have our own language. So now they're trying to marry the two. They're trying to bring their R1.
What did we choose to do different? And do you have any context on that?
Why we did it, not beyond all what I told you. And that's just from looking at the documents. I don't know. None of us were here.
We put it in JG instead of adopting JGR1, and now we're moving it from JG into JGR1 because that's.
The recommendation.
The recommendation, and that's what other districts do.
Right. Except the blue stuff is what's unique to us.
The blue stuff, and in what?
In JGR1, there's these paragraphs that are blue highlighted. Do you see that?
In JGR1?
In JGR1, there's all this blue.
Okay.
You see the blue?
Yes.
So that blue doesn't exist in the other districts' JGR1. That's our old JG, and they've brought it over here to appease us.
So everything in blue?
Is SPS-specific.
Custom added.
It's our custom add. So we.
And the recommendation is to leave that or change that?
Well, the recommendation, they say, figure it out. Like, we could, we can keep all that. I think we can keep all of it if we want, but it's awkward if we keep it, because they cut it, they, they put it in awkwardly. Where it says prohibited conduct needs to slide down. You know, they cut and inserted it, you know, they copy-pasted it. They just copy-pasted it kind of awkwardly in terms of positioning it.
So the rest of this policy, JGR1, but it doesn't exist at all. So this would be a new policy for us?
Yes, for us.
Then why is there?
And then we need to get rid of the word JGAP1. On page three, under prohibited conduct, it says, the student discipline guidelines have been approved by the board. Well, they haven't. And are contained in the district's Administrative Procedure JBAP1. We got to get rid of that sentence. We don't, we don't have JGAP1.
If JGR1 being presented to us, we don't have, then how come it's redlined throughout? Because that's usually if we're taking a policy and changing it, right?
There, there is language in here that is not unique to SPS. Only the blue section is unique to SPS. The other part does exist already. And what's also included in here is new language about AI. That's the new language that's been added in here provisionally.
So the redlines reflect old JGR1, which we don't currently have adopted, and then the red lines changes it.
The whole thing's basically new.
It updates a policy that we don't have.
Exactly. That we used to have, though.
But other districts do have it. As one of their MSB policies, we just haven't adopted it in this form. So they've added in blue, in blue, the stuff that is.
And this stuff.
That stuff was already there as a part of their pre-existing policy that we have not adopted.
Right. I think that they are trying to get more uniformity, because they code their policies. And I think that they've kind of appeased us all along and fixed it. And I think they've come to a point where they're like, you know what, can you just, can we cookie-cutter this? Can you be like everyone else?
So other than better organization, what does this substantially change?
They added AI.
Well, no. This changes a lot of things. There's words here that I'm really excited to see. Like, for vandalism, it has restitution. We don't have that in our scope and sequence.
Oh, you're talking about their language that we don't have in our policy? I was going to say, that language is already there, not something that we had adopted, though, never mind.
Yeah, we never had JGR1. So I pulled up NIXAS and Ozarks, and the JGR1 that they're giving us is word for word, what they had plus the AI language. So for them, they're just looking at it going, okay, AI language, done. We're looking at it going, wow, we haven't seen this before.
In a while.
In a while. Well, none of us, none of, none of us eight have seen this before. So the real crux of the issue here is, if we adopt this, it contradicts our scope and sequence. How are we going to marry those two?
We might go back and make edits.
To which one? To this one or that?
If it's a board policy, then we're going to make edits.
Oh, I love you. Because I'm seeing some.
Is that clear as mud?
Does it?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's clear, yes. Maybe in two weeks it'll be, or however long, it'll be more clear.
I didn't mean to make it more confusing. If I did, I apologize.
Yes, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments on policy proposal JG or JGR1? Okay.
So, Dr. Lathan, just so that I'm clear, do you like, do you like this policy?
Yes.
Oh, excellent.
Yes.
Are there any other proposed board policies that a board member has questions or comments on? And again, as a reminder, we will be voting on these during our February 27th board meeting, so we still have a couple weeks to digest this. Okay, if you have any other questions over the next couple weeks, of course, please send those to Dr. Lathan and copy Vice President Scott and I, Vice President Scott, Vice President Kreis and I, so that the questions will be sent to the entire board. Okay, I'm going to move to item 6.01. I think we are all excited about this. And Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Nicole Holt, and is Dr. Majors joining you?
She's not.
Okay.
Just me? All right. Well, good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. You are well aware of our board update schedule, so I'm here tonight to talk with you about middle-of-the-year Galileo Assessment Update. Slides were uploaded as of Friday, and no significant changes. So if you'd had a chance to preview, it will be the same for you tonight. You want them to come now? Dr. Lathan is switching up my plan, but it's all good. I'm not alone tonight. Dr. Majors isn't with me, but I'm not alone tonight. And so we're going to get to Section 2, which is Spotlight Schools, in just a few. And you'll hear from our lovely guests. So, you're well aware of the four priorities, help to establish them. Today's will live in success-ready students, as it always does. You are also well-versed in Dr. Lathan's superintendent goals, which as a result are all the goals of the executive leadership team and campuses as well. And so our time tonight will live in Objective 1.1 and 1.3. Here is the roadmap for the time we'll spend together. We'll just take a brief moment to review the purpose and intent of assessment, and how that is driven around the use of district data. You'll get a brief update on both growth and proficiency at middle-of-the-year. Much of our time will be spent with these friends that have joined us tonight, spotlighting the good work that they are doing on their campuses. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps, both current work that's already going, and a little bit about future work related to assessment. So, I will return you to this quote, which you have seen before, but just as we situate and ground in the conversation for tonight, the reminder that this idea of classroom assessment, so assessment at the most appropriate and intentional level in the classroom is what drives our success. And so the data that we are able to turnkey and provide back to our teachers who can use it is what actually promotes the teaching and learning. And so we have been spending a lot of time really getting ourselves prepared and prepped for this good work. It did not just start in this year. So just a reminder about how that alignment has unfolded, both relative to a guaranteed and viable curriculum and to assessments. So you can see, we've prioritized the use of PLCs, which you will hear a lot tonight. We've also been very strategic around how we design lessons. The curriculum team has been busily working on reviewing processes, putting out management plans, and we've established a clear coaching model that provides access to coaching to every campus in the district. We also, as a result of the strategic plan being adopted and implemented, have been very intentional to align the building school improvement plans, both to our academic priorities as well as to the strategic plan. And then with the entry of Dr. Lathan, obviously came an interim assessment that has provided us a lot of valuable data at the classroom level, as well as this year, the establishment of essential standards at all grade levels. So, just brief research, I know you don't like to spend a lot of time here, but it grounds the work that we do. These are the six tenets of assessment that come out of the book Essential Assessment from Solution Tree, which is a staple resource for us. And it's just this idea that this is what governs the work we're doing around assessment, that it has a clear purpose, that it's not just about the big game or summative, but that we have clear formative pieces along the way, that we're communicating those results both to stakeholders, but most importantly, back to our students and teachers, that there is accurate interpretation of that data, that it reflects the standards, that it is sequential, so that our teachers are making sure that they're assessing as the instruction, that it follows the instruction that's been provided, and that they have the ability in classrooms to make shifts as they see evidence emerging of. and that they have the ability in classrooms to make shifts as they see evidence emerging of student progress. Also, we talked a little bit about, have talked a little bit in the past about this idea of investment. Our students have to understand why we assess and what we're assessing and have to be actively setting goals toward improving their performance. So the district data will live in two buckets. First, we'll talk about growth. And as you know, that is, when we're talking about Galileo growth, this is what we're expecting students, how much we're expecting them to grow from their BOI assessment to their MOI assessment. So you'll see district growth by grade level and course. And then we'll shift to proficiency, which you're very familiar with that. That is the place of mastery. So what percent by grade level have they mastered the standards for that particular grade level or course? So two pieces that we'll look at. The first slide really is about Galileo district-wide growth. So I know that's a little bit tricky to see the green, but hopefully on your screen, it's a little more clear. So what you see here is grade level and course-specific data. So just to remind you, expected growth is what we would expect those students to grow by grade level. So from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, by grade, we would expect this many, this much of a change in their score. Actual growth is the average for all students that took the assessment in that grade level. So what you see represented and what's highlighted in the green is where we have seen more growth than what was expected for the middle of the year. So you can see that ELA is on my left and math is on the right. And again, green would, would represent that students grew more than what was expected of them. So this is district growth. Now we'll move to divisional proficiency from BOI to MOI. So what you see is the data for elementary ELA. So shift your mind, now you're thinking about percent mastery of standards. So percent of students currently proficient or advanced. You can see BOI first, then the MOI, and then the difference. So this is elementary ELA. Elementary math. Here's middle school, similar breakdown, but on the same slide, ELA on the top, math on the bottom. And last but not least, high school. So our grade level ELA and then our content area math. So again, it's easy for me to stand here and tell you the things that we're doing at the district level, but it's a completely different story for campuses and teachers to come to tell you how this comes into practice in their buildings across the district. So this section will work in this way. First, we'll share a little bit about the data that's unique to the particular campus that's featured. Then we give a highlight slide talking about an exemplar piece that is aligned to either our B-SIP or our strategic work. So the teams will talk not only about that piece, but just about assessment and how they have driven this to the student level to improve outcomes for students. So before you see this data, I want to remind you that this scatter plot data is something that's not foreign to you. You've seen it before. It was the way that we shared data at the middle of the year last year. But before I flash it up, I just want to remind you about the quadrants, right? So what we want when we're looking at the scatter plot is for our students to be above the line, because that speaks to proficiency. So above the green line means that they were proficient or advanced, mastering the standards. And then to the right speaks to growth. So to the right of the red line is speaking to growth. So we want students up and to the right when we think about where they, where they should be at this point. Just a reminder there. So Pipkin is the furthest over here. So Dwayne Cox is with us. He's the principal there. Shannon Lightfoot is over here to the far end. She is the eighth grade ELA teacher. And Debbie Lambeth is their learning coach. So here is eighth grade ELA district data. So again, quadrants were already described for you. So you can see how the district, every eighth grader in the district for ELA was spread out across the scatter plot. So again, if I'm just talking about quadrant one, 33% of our students, that's 525 eighth graders, grew at the rate we would expect them to and were proficient or advanced. And then you walk through the quadrants. Here is Pipkin's eighth grade ELA data. So you can see moving that scatter plot up and to the right, which is what we want. Here is the data in a different way, by grade level. So again, that percent proficient or advanced, and then the difference. And they're going to share a little bit about their journey, but they're going to ground some of that conversation in the use of their coach and the results-based coaching tool to really improve outcomes in classrooms. So take it away, Team Pipkin.
All right, I guess I'll start us off. Thank you for allowing us to come and, and talk a little bit about Pipkin. I know that we're on a time budget, so I'm going to use my words wisely because those of you who know me know that I could talk about Pipkin forever. So we have established something really unique in our building. And it's so important that we support our staff in multiple areas. You know, we have all had conversations around discipline and so forth in the classrooms. And so we have used our BI's to help us with that, to help drive our coaching cycles. So I'm going to kind of walk you through an example. I have a BI. They are working for the teacher. The teacher's asked, hey, come in, I want you to look at this class, help me figure out what's going on, how can I get better? So they're collecting that data of like, hey, at a 10-minute mark, here's where the kids started disengaging. So they may be working with the sixth grade team, and they're just collecting that data points for me. Then I meet with them, I get that data of like, hey, here's the trend we're starting to see. Like, at about the 10-minute mark, kids get disengaged. At this mark, this, this group gets disengaged. So what I do with that is then I turn to my learning coaches. I come back to them, I say, okay, we've got coaching cycles coming up with our sixth grade team. Here's what we're seeing going on in the classroom with students. When we are taking and working with them in lesson planning, what instructional strategies are being used at this timeframe throughout a lesson? And how do the ones we're picking impact this engagement? And so that's where we kind of marry both the curricular and the behavior piece together to make sure that we're servicing the kids the way they need to be served. And I will let Debbie take over from here.
And then we've noticed with the instructional shifts, it's also shifted the behavior. So I know engagement was spoken about before the board meeting started. And the teacher moves and how they plan their lessons are critical in that behavior in your classroom. And so we have decided to be intentional about our coaching cycles this second quarter, where we're focusing on the seven elements and the district frameworks and all the content areas. And I have been doing one-on-one coaching cycles with the teachers. And then we are bringing that into our PLT meetings to where we are now at the analysis level of having teachers bring in one lesson. And we are actually peer coaching each other and analyzing the lesson with what do we notice and what do we wonder? And then how can we make this lesson to be the best lesson that it can be for the students?
So I'm going to add one thing on that. One of the struggles as a building administrator is how do I develop new teachers? How do I increase their, their knowledge and their ability to make those instructional shifts? So what we developed with that is now they're seeing others and what they're doing in their classroom, but they're not in the classroom. So when they're in their department time, they're getting to see what other people are doing and have those really rich conversations on why are we choosing those strategies? And I'm going to turn that over to Shannon because she's our department head in ELA as well.
So if you look at those seven core practices, we started pretty much right there with two. And that's where we started looking at, how are we vertically aligning this? So that you're filling in for those gaps and you're not being repetitious? Because the problem is, the idea is to move them in their depth of knowledge, six, seven, eight. If everybody's teaching the same thing exactly the same way, you're not getting any growth and you're getting disengaged kids. We're soundly into four right now. Everything we do is based on that evidence. So Debbie will come into my room or any other teacher. We will sit down, we will go through that lesson. Then we may do a different lesson, as she mentioned, in the PLT time. But what we're doing is that in the moment, paying attention to when are they engaged? Or we're looking at the CFA data. So do I need to create another learning experience? Or am I ready to go on to a higher depth of knowledge with something? And I'll be honest, I have five core classes, and all five of them are in different places, and that's how it should be. It is not one size fits all. And that has nothing to do with a high flyer or a low flyer. It has to do with that network of that classroom and understanding that in that moment, when you're looking at those seven steps and you're looking at those core practices, how are your students responding in that moment? And are you actually using your formative data or are you just giving the test for the sake of the test? We're not. We're having those discussions with my learning coach, with my PLT, with my principal. He comes in every other week and we have grade level data. I mean, we, we live and breathe this every single day, but so do my students. So when we take Galileo, my kids set goals. What is a reasonable amount of percentage? Since there's no real cut score on the Galileo, it's not like IREDDY was. So now they have to look at, okay, so I was at this percent when I walked in the gate. Well, now you've got X amount of weeks more of knowledge. Realistically, how much do you think you're going to improve? Based on what you've seen on your CFAs, on your learning experiences, on your summatives? Be honest with yourself. They set their goals. When we get those scores back, guess what we do? We go back to that same original sheet and we're like, how did you get there? What strategies did you use? Did they work? What are you going to do next time? And I don't only share that with my students, we send that home to the parents. So everyone's involved.
And one highlight, I want to make sure that, and I know Shannon isn't going to, to share it herself. If you go back to that actual growth chart, the one right before that, where it had the actual growth or the predicted growth, and I believe the district's actual growth was 27. Our eighth graders' actual growth was 41.
It was 47.
Forty, oh, I stand corrected, 47. So it's very significant.
Don't discount the kids.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Disney Elementary is our second spotlight school. So Lori Elliott is here as the principal, Haley Carr, first grade teacher, as well as Brooke Snyder, another first grade teacher. And then Michelle Slominski is the learning coach. I will not neglect Beth Sambodi is sitting back here. She's the assistant principal at Disney as well. So Team Disney is with us tonight. Looking at data again, here's first grade ELA district data. So you can see that there. Same quadrants apply as prior slides. And then here is first grade ELA specific to Disney from BOI to MOI. And then here is Disney's ELA growth by grade level or percentage by grade level. So you can see, just a reminder, the black square there for kindergarten because we don't assess K at BOI. So MOI is our first data point there, which is why you don't see a difference. But then you can see differences across the other grade levels. A reminder, you saw this particular quote at the beginning of the year in our academic update, but a reminder here about essential standards. We established those this year across grade levels. And Lori and her team are here because of the way they systematically collaborate around the data relative to essential standards. So take it away.
Well, thank you very much for letting us share our journey too of collaboration and becoming a data-driven team. We really have felt that Galileo has been that platform that takes the written standard, the written curriculum from the state, those state standards, the district essential standards. It's like the funnel that pours into the four PLT questions of how do we, what do we want students to know? How do we know if they've learned it? What do we do if they don't? And what do they do if they do? Where before, some of our conversations sounded a little bit like, well, I taught it. They just didn't learn it. And now we have this cultural shift into, boy, what if our students didn't learn this? What is it that we're missing and how do we want them to learn it? And what do we need to do to adjust our instruction? Not looking on how students need to adjust to our instruction. We're adjusting to them. But that data has really allowed us to dive into that and find some common data tools that makes our conversation even more explicit and focusing on our instructional practices in the classroom.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been really exciting this year, being a part of PLT and seeing data being at the forefront. Last year, that wasn't happening. We were speaking in vague terms. Yeah, most of my students got it, maybe a few didn't. Now we have had a true shift. Our focus is not on teaching, our focus is on learning. So that has been really exciting to see. And Dr. Elliott and I have been really passionate about leading this charge, but we need you to know that it is our teachers that are doing that hard work. And so we're going to ask them to be kind of at the forefront of this discussion.
We, if you can't tell, love data. We get excited about it. So something that our first grade team has done is we took one of those essential standards, the priority standard, and we kind of essentially backwards planned it. We, we chose our timeline, the particular standard we wanted to teach our, which was our nonfiction text features. We, we didn't have 100% clarity on how we wanted to teach it, but more importantly, what students were going to demonstrate or how they were going to demonstrate proficiency. So we planned it out, we did our lesson, we created our, our unit. We did some CFAs in between as we went along, and then we had our summative. And then from our perspective, they understood what the assessments that we were giving throughout the unit. About a month later, they took that Galileo middle-of-the-year test, and they were assessed on the essential standard that we had created that unit for, we taught. And then our perception of their understanding did not match their scores on Galileo. So that took us, okay, we got to take a step back. Our students did not understand it the way we thought. Let's see what we could do. We kind of had this urgency to, we've got to do something, we've got to reteach this across the board. We've got to reteach. And so that's when we pulled out our MacBook, we pulled out the item specs. And something that Galileo does is it kind of created this universal tool for us to be able to see this is how our students are being assessed. Now we can use Galileo and this data tool to create our own assessments based on that vocabulary, that common knowledge. And so we recreated it. We've got this new unit plan that we're ready to carry out. And we're still assessing them along the way. But now we know how to take that data and create learning targets. So maybe our students didn't understand this component of the standard. So we're going to break that standard down. And now we're going to teach to the learning targets and really pinpoint what it is we want our students to know. And so the assessment types vary. So they're getting it on Galileo, but now they're also getting it in a form of we created to use that common knowledge for all of our students.
So after we looked at all of our data, our formatives, our summatives, our Galileo data, we realized that our conversations, kind of like what Michelle was saying, were very surface level. It was just, did they get it, did they not? And so we were really searching for a way as a team to keep track of our data in a way where we could see all of our first grade classrooms' data with the students and the teacher and really have a universal language where we're able to just be on the same page with how we're entering it, how we're testing it. So we, we made a form that does that, and it's really fostered a lot of collaboration with our team. And it's kind of shifted the focus from what my students are doing to what our students as a first grade team are doing, which has really shifted our instructional practice from, I, I just feel like it's really heightened it to where we're hitting the third and fourth PLC, PLC question of, you know, what do we do if they don't know it? And then what do we do if they do know it? So for example, if on my data, my kids got a 50% mastery and Brooke's class got 80% mastery, I can see how I can adjust my whole group teaching and something, get, go to her for advice to see what she did that I can adjust my teaching with. Or, you know, with small group, we can see which students are getting it and which ones we need to pull into small group and reteach specific things. Like if it was just the heading text feature or just the, the photograph, we can just pull that, that small group.
So they've taken the initiative to really create this data common tool because it, it really did help them get that quick snapshot of, ooh, we've got some, we've got some greatness going on, but we've also got some reteaching. And then they, now their time is not spent on breaking down standards all the time. It's really focused on those instructional practices than, and those engagement strategies that are building and supporting kiddos. We, three years ago, if I said collaboration, my teachers were going to gouge my eyes out. And it was not something that was really happening in our building during our middle-of-the-year one-on-one sessions that they had with me. Our huge celebration is that collaboration across the board was the theme as the number one thing that was going well in our building. They felt it was intentional. And the only thing that they wished was, we need. we need more time so that we can do this more. Like these are, this is intentional instruction, and I feel like a better teacher.
So we really do feel confident that we are doing the right work at the right time. And like Dr. Elliott said, probably our only barrier is time, because this work is important, but it's hard. And so one thing that we would ask as a consideration is to think about providing that PLT time within our school day, but that is not a part of the teacher's regular planning time. Element, we differ in our district between elementary and how that's handled in high schools. And so it's just something that we're going to put on the table. In addition, we weave this learning into our half-day plan. We've done some half-day planning that our building has paid for, but we would love for that to be considered. Where we're either building in a half of a day every quarter for teachers to do this depth of collaboration, or to consider some type of stipend to pay them for their work that they're doing outside of contract hours. And so we just really appreciate you taking the time to listen to our journey. But most of all, we appreciate the work that our teachers at Disney are doing, because they are making a difference for our students.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. And last but not least, The Hill. Hillcrest is here. Rob Kroll is here. I don't have Cecil's name on this slide, but Cecil McBrayer is here as well. He's the assistant, one of the assistant principals there. Kayla Froming is here. She is an English II teacher, as well as the department chair for ELA. Chelsea Russell Ice is here as well, English II teacher. And then Alicia Moore is the learning specialist that supports Hillcrest. So the team from The Hill is here as well. Here is English II data, just for comparative points for the district. So you can see where that distribution lies. And then Hillcrest's 10th grade English II data to highlight there. Here is their ELA by course, so English I, II, and III scores. And the team that's here is going to speak to that amazing gain from BOI to MOI. One of the things that they are really going to highlight is the ongoing job-embedded professional learning that's happening in their PLTs, and how that is really a mechanism for getting the work done. So the team from The Hill, let's hear it.
So I'm Rob. I get to be the Hillcrest, I get to be the Hillcrest principal. I was going to say that differently, but I was going to introduce this. You can pass that along. So in order for, and as everyone has already said, the work to take place, you have to create a collaborative work environment around the right work. And so that starts with a clear mission, vision, collective commitment, and goals. Our mission at Hillcrest is to ensure a high-quality education for all students. Our vision is that all of our students would have the opportunity to attain their future, that they would reach the future that they can achieve at Hillcrest. And then our collective commitments are listed there. Those collective commitments are mainly around our professional work environment, the way we collaborate. And as an administrative team, myself, Mr. McBrayer, the other administrators, and then all of us collectively, we hold one another accountable to these collective commitments. It's really hard to do collaborative work without that. And then our goals, those live inside that Building School Improvement Plan, the BCS that Dr. Holt referenced. And so those obviously revolve around different things, but specifically around our literacy and the way that our students do, especially in English II, because English II is the EOC-tested area, and it is the one which DESI assesses the way that we're doing as a high school in literacy at Hillcrest in all high schools. And so we really intentionally try to do as much work as we can. And so as was mentioned by Michelle about the advocacy for what we would refer to as our late start, we do that on Wednesdays. That is when our professional learning communities start to really boil, really drill down into what we would refer to as professional learning teams. Two of the three members of our English II professional learning team are here. That's Ms. Froming and Ms. Russell Ice. And both of them teach English II students. There's one more teacher as well. But both of them teach English II students at Hillcrest. On every Wednesday, they collaborate. They look at common assessment data that they both, that all three given, and they look at the results that I'm not going to get into their work and step on their toes. But I do want to let you guys know this, is that they also meet with Alicia. Cecil oversees not only our freshman academy and all of our freshman students, but he also oversees our English Language Arts Department as well. And that's a lot of the reason why that he's here. He helps with ensuring that that structure of collaboration gets to go where it needs to go in order for our students to be able to learn what they need to learn. So I'm going to stop talking and let our team begin to talk a little bit about what they do specifically on late starts, when we have that designated collaboration time, but really the way that PLC process works, and why we saw really what is the largest growth in English II in the district, which is the one sitting to the left of me.
All right, so we are fortunate enough that we get to meet once a week for Late Start during PLT. And so the three of us will sit together and chat, and sometimes Cecil will join us, or Alicia. And that is when we really look at the data. And so whether it's a CFA that we've given, or it's DCA, or Galileo Benchmark, and that's where we're really going to break that down. And we can go through and look at it. Maybe we notice a common misunderstanding, so we can look and get really specific with questions even, and say, okay, well, maybe the wording was, I don't talk, like, I don't reference that in the classroom in that way, or use that exact terminology. And so that could be where the misunderstanding is. And so that's really helpful to us with going into RTI and what RTI is going to look like, if we need to do a whole class and, you know, reteach, or if we can do it in small group, or just during flex time. And so that's really beneficial to us. And then we also are able to meet once a week during a common plan time. And that's usually when Alicia joins us as well. And that is where we utilize our time to possibly look back at what we've done in our curriculum pacing, but really to look at where we are and to look ahead. And especially if we need to do any kind of readjust, reteach in the classroom, and what that's going to look like. And so we utilize that. And really where Galileo has helped us a lot this year is just being really intentional with what we're doing in the classroom. And so again, whether it's looking at CFA data, or DCA data, or Galileo, you know, we were able to look at how our kids did first semester and kind of adjust what we were going to be doing for third quarter, and where we needed to be for EOC, for the DESI priority standards for the EOC, and make our decisions based off of that. And so that was really beneficial.
So I have the wonderful job of getting to support teachers, and I think that all of you know, we have wonderful teachers in our district, teachers that show up and work hard every day. And so my role is really just to amplify that work as the instructional coach or learning specialist at Hillcrest. And so because of the common collaborative time that we have set aside, these guys get to share all of their collective genius with each other. So my role is to create conditions where they can meet, to be sure that they know all the opportunities or possibilities, and really just on occasion to ask good questions and get to sit there and watch all of their genius come to light. And so what happens when they're meeting is they're making sure that they're on pace with each other. That allows them to have apples-to-apples to compare and see, how are your kids doing, how are my kids doing? What can we learn from each other? So I think I have one of the best jobs in the district, because I just get to see them in the kitchen, working through those recipes, and then reflecting on it. And I know they're so proud of their students and all the work their students do. And I just feel so proud of the teachers at Hillcrest and all of the commitment that they bring every day to their work.
Yeah, I do want to say one more thing, thinking of that though, is that not only are we able to grow and learn from each other, but through our students as well. And using this to celebrate students and seeing the excitement on their faces when they get it, and we acknowledge that they get it, and we celebrate them for it, even just a one-on-one conversation, and getting to talk with them one-on-one about where they are, where they need to be, and seeing any growth that they have. Even if they're not right where we want them to be yet, they're moving in the right direction. And that, being able to use the data for that has just been amazing, yeah.
I'm sort of the hippie-dippy one, but I'll keep it really brief. Kayla stole exactly what I was going to say, and I'm not even mad about it, because it really actually points to the fact that our PLT works really well together. I, when hit with the assessments, I'll be the first one to admit, I thought, that is a lot. And what I didn't know was, that's a lot of opportunities to celebrate. Because every CFA is one of our standards. And all of those standards are, of course, you all know this, but they're going to the Galileo. It's not a hard sell to, hey, do your best on this. I want to see what your best is. You already mastered all of this. Now you get to show, like, everybody that you mastered this. And so working in our PLT, and working with Kayla, and working with Jackie in our department, has been really incredible, because one, I would not trade my job for the world, honest to goodness. But it is hard. Great days, hard days. You're not ever by yourself. I have two incredible people that we put the bar really high. We want the Hillcrest sophomores to be excellent, and they can be. They just need people that believe in them, that they can do it. And then are able to get them the steps that they need to actually get there. Not just the words, but the actual tools, and have the patience and the time. And my goodness, how many times have one of my partners helped me out with an idea of just one or two students, like we're talking about, just one or two students that didn't quite get there? And instead of it being a thing where it takes up a block of reteaching, now with this kind of data at our hands, it can be pinpoint. It can be these students, your time, while you've already got them moving on to the next, to the next. And I just, as a teacher, am just like so pleased to be a part of such an incredible team at an English II level, an incredible team at The Hill. I suggest everyone come to The Hill. It's a real suggestion. But I am an experienced teacher, but new to our district, and I am so proud of the work that's being done here. Because I would never have known that first day, looking at all of these kids, you're all going to be incredible. And yet, every single one of them is, in their own way.
And to speak to that, just real quick, they're going to talk about the data and the numbers and all the good stuff that we're seeing with our scores and our Galileo. But if you got to walk in their classrooms and see the relationships that they're building with these students, and the community of learners that they have built and they've created, it's fascinating. It's amazing to watch. Dr. Kroll handed you all our collective commitments. They've made their own statements. I mean, it's coming from top down, bottom up, all of it in between. And the work that they're doing is just fantastic. So getting to see that on a daily basis for me, I take zero to if any credit for what these ladies and our other English II teachers are doing. Awesome work.
Thank you. So just a brief summary. You've heard some of the things that I'll highlight here around current and future work, but just to put a bow on tonight's presentation, some of the conversations that were already held here lived in the space of the middle-of-year data protocol. We referenced this in December in the APR presentation. But just to break it down, we asked all campuses to take a clear, clean look at that MOI data relative to the essentials, then what that looked like as outcomes came for middle-of-the-year, and then taking it back to either EOC or MAP analysis. What do we know about how that question, or those questions, have been asked before? What might be the gaps that exist from your score right now to what you know they're going to need to be able to be assessed on eventually? And how can you intervene? So you've heard them all talk about the use of reteach and intervention as a tool. And this really put into place who those students are and what interventions they might most readily access. So that was for all of our campuses. I do think I'd be remiss not to mention, because all of these teams utilize this tool to support the work that they're doing, as do many others in the district. Educlima is really like a data warehousing tool that we utilize. And you can see that that data comes into that tool from the state. Then we have our district, both Common Assessments and Galileo Benchmarks, as well as our Early Childhood Assessments. And then any site-specific assessments. You heard them talk about CFAs. You've heard them talk about the other types of assessments that they might draft and load into Galileo. So this is a place for them to collect that and to organize that data to help them make the real in-time decisions that they're making every day. These are just snapshots. So just to give you a picture, and it happens to be The Hill, but you can take and make collections. So it's ease of access for teachers. What used to happen is it would take us half the PLT to locate all the necessary data we needed to do all this comparative analysis. Those collections are created now, so the time is spent, as you've heard them, on the actual instruction. What moves are we going to make as teachers? What are we going to do to correct misconceptions that the data is revealing? So this is a time saver for our teaching staff. You can group it by academic charts, you can create data walls, and this is the place where they house their PLT agendas. So again, this is about us, at the district level, making it easy for teachers to do the work in their buildings, and leaders to lead the work that's leading to these rich student outcomes. One more piece, and again, you're like, what in the world is that? But this is just additional ways that Educlima supports our teachers in grouping specific students for opportunities for reteach and intervention. So the data can flow in that way, specific to student, as well as showing the analysis between two data points. So that middle one is for my people who just love to geek out on data. And then obviously, we can look at anything longitudinal in Educlima, which helps us see growth over time. We also continue to be really intentional about the professional learning that we offer to our leaders to then turn and take back to their campuses. You know, we've talked a lot about Marzano. And recently, in December and January both, we gave leaders opportunity to see lots of these Marzano instructional strategies in practice, and be able to take specific items from them back to their campuses to utilize with their teams. So again, you heard them talk about how I might chunk the content, how I'm processing, what I do when I notice students disengage, and what are my exact next steps. That language and learning is coming from things that we are making sure leaders have access to, to support the good work that's happening on their campuses. Some more curricular updates for MOI are that our Curriculum Development Councils are meeting. They are taking a peek at the essential standards related to the DESI-released specifications and working towards proficiency skills. I'll stand here and tell you, we have heard from leaders, we have heard from teachers, that, shocker, we didn't get it right the first time, right? We didn't expect that we were going to have every progression right, that we were going to have every CFA and DCA written exactly as we needed to. And so we hear that feedback. And teachers are coming in to help us reorganize that as we think about 2425. We're already doing that in teacher teams. We know that we have opportunities for improvement, and we are going to let our best and brightest do that work to help support their colleagues out in the field. Here's a little picture of that. They're taking time after the school day as well, in some curriculum academies, to help us with that work. I do think I'd be remiss not to talk about vertical progressions, because you heard all of them talk about it. When students have gaps in instruction at a grade level, it behooves us to look at what occurred before, and then what they're going to be expected to do after. And so we've heard from teachers saying, we need to see that. We need to see it all in one place, so that as we plan in our PLTs, we can say, well, they might have gotten it in this grade level, but we're showing that we haven't mastered it here. So what are the building blocks that I need to put into this grade level to help our students reach proficiency at the current grade level and beyond? So that work is also well underway. Just to keep you up to date on what will happen moving forward, here is our assessment timeline. So we are going to, as previously mentioned to the board, have MOI comprehensive and bottom-5% school visits. We are going out on those campuses. We are interacting with teachers and leaders, and we are putting in plans of action. We're going to go in and check, how did that go? What do you need next? We've got one more quarter before we're having another round of assessments. And so how can we intervene now to help students on those campuses specifically reach mastery? We are going to continue to utilize our DCAs, you heard all of them talk about that, to inform their instruction. We'll have interim assessments, again, which will be that layer of RTI analysis that will tell us a predictor towards how our students might perform on the end-of-year assessments. And then, of course, we'll wrap up our year with end-of-year state assessments, both the MAP and EOCs, as well as end-of-year Galileo. So that's where we're headed as we approach. I know it seems weird, but we're on the downhill slide to the end of the year already. I'll thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I would like everyone in the room to thank these leaders and teachers for the time. Here are the good work.
Thank you, Dr. Holt, and thank you for all of you taking time in your evening, on a Tuesday evening, to be here. I know that this board in particular really values the data, and also values how you all are using the data to increase student achievement. So do any of our board members have specific questions for our presenters this evening?
I have a comment. I just want to acknowledge the hard work that you all put in to make sure that our students are succeeding. You guys are taking data and analyzing the data, planning, differentiating instruction, you know, adjusting, collaborating, and it demonstrates that you guys have intense care for your student learning, that you have great skill and knowledge and experience that you're putting to use. I think people underestimate how hard it is to do the work that you do, and I recognize it, and I honor you guys, and thank you for the hard work that you're doing to make a difference in our students' lives.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Any other board member comments or questions? Any other board member comments or questions?
If I might please. I do want to say that I've always said to myself, and even on the board, that I don't want to see a point or two increase. I want to see five points. And I think you're on the track to do that. I really like what I see. You set the foundation. You're building that. You're collaborating amongst yourselves. I really liked the opportunity where we talked about having the instruction, being able to control the discipline product, the discipline within the classroom. That is very important. If you keep their attention, it's like the 15 minutes or the 10 minutes, you were right at that mark, and then you start losing them, that's where your problems begin. That's my assumption, based on my knowledge. So if you've identified that, then we're going to help improve on that discipline. Improving on the discipline helps with the instruction. If we help with the instruction, I see the five points coming down the road. That's what I want to see. And I want to say thank you very much for your time that you've dedicated in the students and coming to the board and being able to help us understand just exactly how well-in-depth you are at the core issues that we have with our students in the academic process. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for joining us. It's great to have these opportunities with educators interacting with us. It's such a good reminder. I mean, we have to look at data, and we talk about it a lot, but this is such a good reminder that it's really about the people and to hear your experiences and how the people are going to work day-to-day to put in the inputs that ultimately have the outcome, which is, I mean, really, the students, but what we see is really just data, and it's good to have this sort of interfacing. I did have a question for the Disney group. Two first-grade teachers, right? Do you, and I've asked this question before as I've talked with other, particularly like K through three teachers around the district. I got to imagine, the way, I mean, just the nature of Galileo, it is what it is. We've got a test on a device. It's multiple-choice sort of format, I assume, and there's challenges with that, particularly in the first-grade level. So do you find very, and actually, in the data you showed on the slide that showed Disney, I don't remember which slide it was, but it showed K through five, and it showed proficiency levels.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, you found that fast. And you can see in K through three, the proficiency, I see growth. So first of all, this is not negative. I see growth, that's great. Growth is what we're looking at. But if you look at the middle column of just proficiency, kindergarten, first, and second grade are notably lower than third, fourth, and fifth, and the first thing that comes to my mind is just their ability to use these devices and navigate the tests could be a big part of that difference. Do you find that day-to-day that you are, I guess, having to, when you're doing these assessments, look at what the assessment says and then also cross-reference that with what you know about that child and say, ooh, I don't, that doesn't seem to be the case with that student. I may need to find out if they really do know the data or if they just had a problem with the testing method.
I think something that we do is, if Galileo was the only data point we were taking, then we might, where you were saying, have that big, oh, no, do they, they don't understand it, or they do, but since along the way, we're also giving those CFAs paper pencil.
What is it, CFA?
It's Common Formative Assessment, like a quick check, or like if we give them a question based on a nonfiction text feature, can they locate that and/or match that? So it's just basically your paper pencil assessment. So I think if we weren't giving those along the way as well, then I think it would be a cause of concern, like, oh, no, this is, but we're assessing them in other ways as well. This is just one format. But we do, it causes us to look at the question. So, ooh, my kids maybe got 20% on this question, this standard. What is that question asking? And then we can look at that Galileo question, take that question, and put it into our direct instruction and give it to them that way as well.
Are there opportunities to correct, I guess, on an individual basis? So if you see a question that a couple of students or just really just an individual had a problem with, but you think, they know that. Does that get corrected in a way that's representative in the data that you see in the end, or is it just test happened, it's done?
I think with our communication, we have good communication with our parents, too. So when they're able to see this one score, it goes along the lines of, we're also assessing them here. They may not have got it because of maybe technology or because this is how it was assessed, but now we also have it this way. So giving them multiple forms to show that they understand the knowledge, I feel like...
Can I add on to that? I'm just going to add on to that, too. The great thing about Galileo is we do get to go in, look at that specific question, and it may be like, oh, my gosh, I've asked for two forms and they only gave us one. So what are we going to do? We're not going to change a question in Galileo, but what I can change is, I'm going to go back in my class and we're going to practice this question type. And I might say, okay, I want you to give me the best two answers for this. So now we're practicing that type of question. And so they're seeing it in regular discussions. Now we're seeing it on Galileo for the next time. And K1, 2, they are seeing some of these questions for the first time. Once they get to third, fourth, and fifth, now they've seen it for a couple, they've seen it a couple of years. And there are some adjustments that we need to make in instruction to adjust to the technology-enhanced question or just maybe the way it's worded.
One thing that I was going to add, I just moved down, or moved down from third grade. So we had the MAP the first year. In third grade is the first time they get it. And so I think them getting the exposure to taking a test online, K1, 2, really helps teachers know, like, what question types they need help with to build their competency to take the MAP test, and also allows them to get familiar with taking a test in an online format like they will when they get to the MAP test. So it kind of allows us to monitor both, you know, taking a test online and how familiar are they with the tools so that when they get to third grade, there's a little bit of background knowledge there.
Have you learned from experience or other methods that we have in place to prepare, like as, like before we take a middle-of-year test, to prepare particularly the younger kids who just might not be particularly focused or have a high level of care for what it is that they're doing if they don't understand it? Have we learned things that work to motivate them to make sure that we're getting the best, the best snapshot of what they actually know? Because, I mean, I know, I have one kid at Disney that would in particular be prone to just click, 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 click. All right, let's go to recess, you know? So how do you head that off with young kids? Are you learning that? Is that something, I guess, you're sharing in your PLTs? Is that something we're sharing across schools to make sure we're getting accurate data?
For us, for Galileo, they have an intro video that we show the students, so that kind of first sets them up for success. So we kind of show them what are their expectations with Galileo. So we really lay out those expectations, and a lot of it is just that growth mindset, I feel like, of, you know, as we work through this, there might be challenges, but we also are able to create within Galileo, create assessments, like after they take the beginning of the year, we can create assessments with that technology enhancement. So now they're able to gain even more confidence with it, if that makes sense.
And, go ahead. There's also students who have, like, modified plans where if they need a break, and we can tell that they're getting kind of squirmy, because first graders do, that they can pause that test and take a break or come back to it if it's an off day. It has that feature that allows us to do that. And there's also students that will pull small group if we, like, they'll sit up and take it by us so that we can make sure that they're focused. But, I mean, you still are going to have students that struggle with that. It's just, can you make modifications to make it work in little increments or change the plan a little bit?
We really set up a universal plan throughout the building, too, to make sure that everybody, if there are students that need a small group setting, we have our paraprofessionals provide that extra setting for them. Kindergarten takes in small groups because that's the best setting for all kindergarten at that time, small increments of time, but we have that same expectation through every classroom and communicating on how, what a testing environment should look like. And so I think that has really also helped, that they're seeing, it really is silly, that they're seeing the bigger kids, and they're hearing that the bigger kids are doing the exact same thing that they are, and that makes a big difference. We talk about assessment week and celebrating, and we kind of make it a deal.
Is there any motivation in their mind, other than just do your best on this thing? I can't remember. Is there, are there any awards based on this? Like, if you are proficient in something, there's no acknowledgement of that or anything like that?
We did that with I've Ready, but right now, trying to figure out the growth level because that range changes. It's really hard to do that full, that award based on a score. So teachers also do a lot like, I can't remember which school said, but they set their goals and there's some celebrations within that goal setting for classroom, but not every classroom does.
Not on an individual basis, but more on a classroom or school basis?
Yeah.
I'm going to interject something as well. I think one of the things that has helped us improve our student engagement is explaining to them why. Why are we taking this and how do we use it to plan our instruction? Because when we can talk to them about, hey, if you already know this and you can show us, we don't have to spend three days in class going over it again. We can move on. We can do something that you haven't learned before. And then the other piece is just being upfront with the kids of, here's where you were, and then sitting down and having those conversations of, here's your growth, here's the areas, here's what you missed here, here's what you needed to add to make that next step. So I think that transparency with our kids is helping with that engagement of how they are actually taking the test.
We have buy-in problems, I think, at every level, probably. So the most effective thing, I think, and Kayla does this, and I have taken after her so well, is like what was just said, you're explaining why, but you're also explaining why this standard has real-world value. So it's not just these words. We always have our standards broken down into just, like, everyday people conversation. And we can always remind our students that, yeah, this Galileo test is just here, but this is indicative of also ACT, ASVAB, any kind of certification test you're going to have to take. So you're learning not only, like, actual real skills and the standards, but you're also learning what an assessment looks like before it's high stakes. And that has changed for me, a lot of the buy-in, because no 15-year-old comes into my classroom thinking, this is what I want to do. I want to take this test today.
And if you can figure out a way to get 100%, that's motivating.
We will pay you anything.
And write like a book or something, you are going to make a lot of money.
Any money.
Yeah. But if we, that's, I think, goes back to we're celebrating their successes, though, too, is like having those conversations with them and being able to look at them and have those one-on-one conversations with them, and they see it, too. I mean, that's, for me, where I get the buy-in is like them seeing what they're doing.
We're hard to deny when we're genuine. So if I were looking at you and you were one of my students, and I said, you did incredible. Look at this. Look at how incredible you did, and just the last time it was here, and that's just, that's just three weeks apart. What are you capable of? Yes, not every 15-year-old is going to look at me and go, huzzah! But almost all of them are going to actually do it because someone wants them very badly to become amazing.
Well, you're making me want to take the test.
We'll be giving the end-of-the-year Galileo soon.
Break out the test, would you?
Can I add some?
March 4th, we can sign.
Can I add something from a first-grade level? So I think something, not like just for my students' level, but, so, something that I think it's easy to look at is to go straight to the, because I know I do it, 39% at proficient and advanced, but if you would see the class list and you would see how many students moved from below basic to basic, how many moved from basic to advanced to proficient, you would be, I mean, it brings me to tears because I know they're capable and they can set goals at that six, at six-years-old, they can set goals. And I can look at my students and say, hey, on this one, maybe you got 12. Now you got 19, you know? What do you add to 12 to get to 19? And it's like, yeah, and now we're doing math together. So it's like, you got it. So it's like, it's just the, they know. I think sometimes going into first grade, you, for me, you underestimate what they can do, and then when they set goals and you see your whole class list go from, even if it's just that one or two, some go from 12 to 21, it's like, it's, that growth is there, and they might not be proficient and advanced yet, but they will be and they can be. And I think that's the most important thing of the Galileo data is, yes, we're assessing it all over, but they, they're making growth and they're getting it, and they can be those goal setters, even at six-years-old, because we see it every day.
Yeah. And they're taking ownership and they're learning. They really are. I know that sounds crazy. Oh, thanks. But you talked about the individual. I show, I don't put names with it, but we will put the scores up there. You'll see the little greens and the blues, and nobody knows where their name's at. You will have the class going, oh, my gosh, we're doing this. Okay, we got to work harder, guys. We're falling a little bit on this one. We can do it here. They'll start cheering each other on. Okay, I don't know if you know many, very many eighth graders, that's not common. That's really not common, y'all. They're usually like, I don't know. No. In this instance, they're cheering each other on. They're figuring out, how do I get my friend up here where I've managed to get? Where do we need to go next? If you could walk in my class tomorrow, and they're going to tell you point-blank whether or not they're ready for that test, or, no, Ms. Lightfoot, we need another practice because we're not there yet. That's the thing you can start building when you use the data, when you use the CFAs, the DCAs, the Galileo, the learning experiences. Make them responsible. I'm just the lady hanging out at the podium. I really am. I'm just the lady hanging out at the podium that makes weird voices every once in a while. It's them. It's really them.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members?
None.
I'll be quick.
Well, between Carl Hurt and you, Kelly, we're going to figure out this motivation Quick question. So the numbers that we're seeing, are these Galileo numbers or are the CFAs combined into them? Are they just pure Galileo?
It's Galileo.
It is pure Galileo. Okay, so you had mentioned CFAs. I mean, this isn't news to you, but we know how important discipline is for academic performance, but what I'm hearing, especially from that side, is just how important academic performance is for discipline, right? It's one of the, it's a contributor to poor discipline. They go hand-in-hand. Kids that are doing well, that are growing, they're going to behave better. So that's, okay, last thing. So these quadrants you put up, I'm sure everybody's looking at quadrant one. My eye immediately tracks to quadrant two. I almost care more about quadrant two because if you can get quadrant two, you're going to get to quadrant one. And these numbers are, like, when you look at, oh, where are we? So at Disney, look at that. Forty-five to quadrant four being seven. I mean, I want a huge number for quadrant two. I get that the kids in quadrant four are proficient, but I'm fine with single digits on that, right? So this is so encouraging, and this is what we're seeing more. So maybe the quadrant, so when we're looking at the numbers, that's a reflection of quadrant one and four, right? Are you at or above? That's the proficiency. But I'm looking at quadrant one and two, and these numbers are bigger than they were the last time, which means that this time next year, one and four will be higher. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, if you look at our growth chart, right, our kids are growing more than we would expect them to be growing as they have time in our classrooms. It's just we started from a lower place, which means we have farther to get to proficiency. But the more reps we put in...
When you keep doing the two, you're going to end up in one.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I know it's, oh, my gosh, it's almost 7:45. I better stop. Okay, I'm done.
Well, I'm not. Just a few things to say. First of all, thank you very much, Dr. Holt. Thank you for coordinating all of this and bringing everyone here to meet with us. I do appreciate it, and I know it can be nerve-wracking sitting out there, but you all have done a very nice job. So thank you. I wrote down something that Mr. McBrayer said that I thought was particularly well-stated, when he said, everyone's a community of learners. And I think that is what we're seeing at the schools. It's not that we haven't always been that way, but it's more focused, and I think you're bringing us into the community of learners as well as you educate us as a Board of Education into what's actually going on out in the schools. So I appreciate that, Mr. McBrayer. So I appreciate that, Mr. McBrer. Thank you. I am reminded that uh, as we get everything down to data and numbers, and I'm not disagreeing with the importance of that because I know, I, I know that drives instruction. I know that's a part of our accountability. But I think we all need to be reminded from time to time because I'm reminding myself, learning is really a process. It's not necessarily a product. And we can talk about the products of education, but it is a continual process. So when people talk about lifelong learning, it is not just a cliche. It's not just pie in the sky. It's really about pushing on and continuing to learn. And, and that's what's being demonstrated to me tonight. The PLCs and PLTs, that has been a journey that's been going on for several years. And um, for those of us that are maybe newer to it, it's taken us a while to get there and to, it's, we're not perfect at it yet, but we are moving in the right direction. And I think that comes from leadership and hard work uh, at the site. So again, it's a process, not necessarily a product. Just leading the PLTs and being sensitive to what our colleagues need and, and just as importantly, what our students need to get there. It is always about the why. It's always about the why. And it's, it, that's the case for us and that's the case for students. I truly wish um, that during my time as a classroom teacher, we had had instructional coaches and learning specialists. I think a lot of us, you know, who pushed on through it and made a lot of mistakes, it could have been a smoother pathway had we had the support of you all sitting here tonight and those that are out in the buildings as well. That is money well spent. Um, I do wish we could maybe based on the number of students in the building, expand those opportunities, cause, because I think the bigger the building, I think the bigger challenge it is for the learning specialist. Yes, I see you, Dr. Kroll. And he didn't tell me to say that. I just know that's true.
That's right.
He sure did. He's been a good friend for years. Um, but I'm not minimizing what goes on in a smaller setting either. I mean, it's, it's all intense. It's all important. It's, it's incredible work. But I, you know, I, I see the real merit there. One thing that I have also seen over the years is that good teachers, and everyone in this room has had good teachers and everyone in this room has probably had a teacher where you thought, hmm, maybe not. But on the other hand, good teachers are making it look easy every day to those of us that aren't out there doing it. And I think what we heard tonight is how complicated it is now, how complex it is now for the general public to think, well, I could do that. I understand that. I could stand it up in a podium and do that. That isn't even close to what's going on right now. And so the fact that you're bringing that information to us um, and uh, not only in a celebration format, but also just an informative format, we need to be reminded of that because again, good teachers are making it look easy and nothing could be further from the truth. Nothing. And that's regardless of grade level, that's regardless of content. It is, it is very complex and very complicated. I, I'm a big supporter of differentiated instruction and I know that, that word gets thrown around a lot and it's, it's hard to do and it's, sometimes it's even hard to define. But what you're doing in your buildings really supports that as you look at individual students and you have a conference with an individual kid and say, hey, look where you are, look where you were three weeks ago, now where are you today? So teachers are really tuning in to not only looking at students as individuals, you've always done that, but collectively, how are you doing and, and how do we push forward and move in the right direction and keep moving westward however we can? I do have one question and, and I, I mean, I, I do appreciate the data and I know, I'm probably not into it quite as much as Disney is, but um, it, just kidding. But I, I will tell you, one question that I have is the data entry. How much time does it take? Because this all has to be entered in somewhere and I don't understand Galileo enough personally to know whether that is just spit out automatically or not. But how much time are teachers spending entering data?
Galileo is automatic, right? So the students get the assessment, the analysis is run and that is distributed. What they would probably speak to are additional CFA or DCA, so the district common assessments that teachers are um, entering. That probably they would be the, I don't wanna speak for you, but would be the largest lift.
Takes some time.
Yeah, I would say, I don't know exactly how much time, but.
It probably, it depends on the unit and the subject and how many formatives you're taking, but I mean, I feel like.
Go ahead.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm trying to put an estimate on it, but it's hard. Cause some weeks are heavier than others.
And I feel like sometimes we'll do it as we go within PLT, so we discuss it. So sometimes we'll utilize that PLT time. Other times it's on our own planned time if it's our own data and our, in our own collection. So I would say pockets of time, but it does take some time to get it entered in. And I think the most time is when you are thoroughly looking at it. So I think we enter it and that's pretty quick. I mean, we've got spreadsheets that we make and so we enter it, but I think the, the most time we need is to be thorough with diving into it and looking at it. So the entering doesn't take too much time, but it's looking at the data that takes the most time.
Like analyzing, what are your next steps with this data and then it totally adjusts your instructions sometimes.
Yeah.
Well, and when we think of Bloom's taxonomy, evaluating and analyzing is at some of the highest levels. So that's what you all are out there doing uh, with the data that you're given, okay? I, I would also assume that as you familiarize yourself with these different platforms, the data entry gets quicker and a little easier because it, you're not have, learning how to do something new. But it still takes time to enter it, so, and I appreciate the time that you give to that. So thank you all, every one of you, for what you're doing and how you're supporting um, the children in our district. It can't be, well, I started saying it can't be measured, but we are measuring it apparently. But some of the intangibles out there can't be measured. And your passion comes through. Your passion comes through and it's moving. And I often leave these learning opportunities for me just being inspired and sometimes a bit emotional by um, all the hard work that I see people do. So thank you. You don't get thanked enough, maybe once every five years, but we're gonna take care of that tonight. So, thank you.
All right, first of all, I wanna say I appreciate you coming in and sharing your story tonight. Uh, what I'm hearing is your passion, like Judy said, it's great and so appreciated. And you're successful due to collaboration. You know, the assessments, I'm hearing the assessments are good, right? And there's opportunity for, for celebrations, which, you know, you gotta like that. Um, you know, love that we're setting the bar high, you know, that is great. And, and giving them the tools to get where they need to be, you know, collaborating not only with each other, but with the students as well and motivating them and, and building them up is what I'm hearing. And I love that growth mindset. And I'm hearing that from everyone. And one of my questions though is, you've got great stories. How are you sharing these stories with other schools? You, you talked about building a forum, you know, how is that being shared around the district then?
So I'll speak to the, the strategy at our level, which is just scaling the amazing things that are happening at these campuses. And what we heard from leaders and teachers is we wanna be able to be at other people's places in order to see it happening live and/or collaborate around specific things that we see as problems of practice by grade level or within courses. So being strategic with the executive directors to identify the places where we have things that we can scale and then getting them into one another's buildings um, to see the good things that are happening. But I'll tell you, all of the teachers and coaches that are here are great teachers and so they're already talking to other people in the district about the things they're seeing and/or they're a part of our curriculum development councils who are helping support and make those things that they're doing at their building scalable for the entire district. So what did I miss or what else might you add about telling your story?
I mean, at least for ELA and high school, um, having CDC meetings and getting to talk with the other buildings. Um, I have also been fortunate to get to write curriculum um, this year and so just being really intentional with that tier one instruction and, and what I write, but also working in, with my wonderful coworkers and most amazing learning coach ever. But um, and getting to collaborate, I love to collaborate. I'll collaborate about anything all day long. I love it. Um, I know. I, I'm not lying.
Let's collaborate around dinner.
Yeah. I think just being really intentional with that tier one instruction and what we're teaching with curriculum and curriculum guides and stuff has been really helpful with that and that we will get to share through that as well, even more, yeah.
Great. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. And then what I'm also hearing, if I heard this right, you need more PLT time, you know? Is that right? I'm learning these acronyms. Um, so you need maybe half a day per quarter at least or more?
Yeah, or even if that time were to be built in. So we are not advocating for, just to be clear, we are not advocating to take that time away, that late start from high schools. We love that you guys have that. We are saying, give it to us at the elementary level. Because what our teachers do is their planning time, right? They get one planning period per day. And so they give that time up on the day that they participate in PLT. So those tasks, like especially these lower elementary teachers who need to pull materials for a lesson, they don't have that time on the day that they come to PLT. So they see the value in that meeting, but it would be different if it were also embedded within their school day. Does that make sense? Yeah. You'll see a lot of the teams also, like it carries over to even if it's their PLT day, it's not a day, it's a process. And they're learning how to shift that process through leaders and how do I duplicate that process on our own and continue those great conversations? But again, it's, it's 60 minutes a day and that extra little PLT time of a late start, that's another little additional biscuit that we get of, of spending time together um, or allowing a little PD because we do protect that PLT time for their true collaboration. It's not us talking at them. It is true collaboration based around teacher and student needs. So um, any time that you can gift would be fantastic.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna do my best to get you out of here before eight o'clock, but I do have a few comments. Um, just the, the themes that I continue to hear tonight are like collaboration, lots of collaboration, um, intentional instruction, um, peer coaching, team focus, that it's our students now instead of my students and, and those are just amazing words to hear as we're sitting up here. I also, Miriam had kind of the same realization, if you will, um, that historically I think people have focused on students being at, proficient or advanced. And that's kind of where the bar of the district is. But I also love the growth of the students and that's where the bar of the student is. And to Miriam's point, absolutely. If, if you've got a student that's moved from quadrant three into quadrant two, you can absolutely get them into quadrant one. And when you, when they're moving, say from second grade to third grade, their individual bar has, has been raised, which eventually will raise the bar of the district. And so I just love that we're not just focusing on proficiency, but also growth and that you guys are taking those data points and, and looking at individual students and how you can help them grow. I love that students are setting goals. I think the best ownership or buy-in that you can get is a goal that you've set for yourself and I have no doubt in my mind that as educators, you're pushing them in those goals. So they're not just making an easy goal that they can reach, um, that you are broadening where, where they think they can go and pointing out to them, look where, look how far you've come. Where can you go uh, in the near future? The focus is on learning, which tells me the focus is on students, which we love to hear. And that you guys are getting real-time information so then you can collaborate and redirect the way that you are teaching our students in order to help them succeed at our district. I'm very, and, and I hear you about needing more time for a deep dive into the data, not because you just wanna do a deep dive into the data, because, but it's because you want to help those individual students succeed and you wanna adjust uh, how that's, that's happening. And I'm interested to see how Galileo, which is a relatively new tool that we have at this district, how it's going to impact student success as we look towards the future. Uh, Judy, to your point, it's a process, what'd you say, it's a process, not a product. Um, it's also a marathon, not a sprint. So I acknowledge that these tools that are helping our students succeed, because they're helping you succeed, we're not gonna see the results necessarily overnight. Or sometimes we are, right? Sometimes we are. But moving those students into the growth model, I think over time, as they move from grade to grade, that's where we're gonna see the, the biggest impact. So, okay. Five minutes early unless any of my other board members have questions. Thank you, thank you, thank you for being here and thank you for what you do every day. I keep moving things. Do you have any questions? Take a quick break. We're moving on to the calendar. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Moving on to item number seven, which is our new business item. A reminder that the new business items brought forward this evening are for review and to ask any questions. We will vote on these items during the February 27th, 2024 regular meeting. And the board has received those, these items previously and has had a, an opportunity to ask questions. So we'll move on to item 7.01, which is the proposed calendar for the 24-25 academic school year. And Dr. Range is here to join us this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Yes, so administration is bringing forward, for your consideration, the 2024-2025 calendar. And there are two kind of versions of the calendar. You've got the regular school calendar and the primary years program calendar. That PYP calendar only applies to Field, Roundtree and Boyd. So um, the school calendar committee met in, went uh, in October and also in November to discuss the school counter, calendar. We also got feedback from SLT and ELT. Um, so in sum, so kind of as a reminder, um, when we presented this last year, there are two statutes that really guide drafting the school calendar. The first one in, dictates when schools can actually start school. It's 14 days prior to the first Monday in September. So you can't start school before that, that date. And then the other one gives us the ability to do AMI. So we get, we get to, i- i- in case there's inclement weather, we can make 36 hours up of instruction using AMI. And then also, an important number to consider is 1,044. So we are required, every school district is required to give 1,044 hours of instruction. Now, schools have the ability to chunk that up how they want. How many days you meet is up to you. We meet 172. How, how long your school day is, that's not dictated by the state. We dictate that. Ours is seven hours a day. When you back out the 30-minute lunch, it's six and a half hours of instruction across all levels. So um, that kind of sets the parameters of how the state guides us in making this. So the, the ones we're presenting to you tonight, so the regular school calendar includes 172 student contact days. That's 1,116 hours of instruction. That is 72 hours above the, the minimum 1,044, which is roughly 11 days of school. The PYP calendar is 172 days too, but they're less hours of instruction because they get six days of two-hour early release days. Um, there's six of those spread out through the school year so they can work on, as professional learning teams on PYP initiatives. And then the early childhood calendar, which is embedded within the regular school calendar, it's 170 student contact days, which equates to 1,000, 1,103 hours of instruction. They don't go, they don't start the same, on the, the day that K-12 kids start, they start two days later because those educators help in the kindergarten classrooms, acclimating kids back into school. So notable dates on the, the regular school calendar include the first day of school being August the 19th. Uh, well, we still have a two-week parent-teacher conference window, which we've had over several years. Um, school is not in session on November the 5th, which is an election day. So we won't have students present on campus on that day. Um, second semester starts January the 6th. We won't have students in session on April the 6th, which is the spring election day when we have voters in our buildings. And then the last day of school is Friday, May the 23rd, and that would be a two-hour early release. That being said, I'll open it up for questions.
Okay, are there any questions from board members? And again, we'll vote on this at our next regular meeting.
I have a question. Why don't we use AMI for snow days?
Good question. So we have the option of doing that. The, I, I think the primary reason we haven't been using it is because we have all those hours built in above.
How many do we, cause I, at some point, we gotta be getting close to.
We've missed five days. We have 11 days built in, so we still have about six to play with.
We build in 11?
Yeah. So we have 11 days of excess days, yes.
So if we get close to that number, do we start considering using AMI? Uh, and that's about what, four and a half days? And that's about, what, four and a half days?
Yes, or adding days.
Yes, we start considering AMI or adding days to the end of the calendar year, which we're trying to avoid.
We'd probably want to avoid adding days because you'd have to come back after Memorial Day.
So would the preference be AMI before adding and use those up?
Yes, that would be the preference.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Okay. Okay, and Dr. Range will remain with us for item 7.02, collective bargaining side letter agreements.
So pursuant to Board of Education policy HA, district administration has been engaging with the leadership of SNEA to negotiate the side letters that are before you. In these side letters, as we always do, we talk about wages, we talk about benefits, we talk about working conditions, and we're also doing that with our normal collective bargaining agreements too. So there are eight agreements in front of you. Seven of those apply to Explore and the bargaining unit employees that work Explore, and then one of those side letters centers on launch, I'm sorry, launch adject, teacher side letter, so it deals with launch working conditions throughout the entire school year for next year. So in sum, some of the things that we talked about during our negotiations with SNEA this year dealt with the benefits section across all those units, PTO usage during Explore was discussed, location assignment section was discussed, and the letter of interest, there was a change in the date related to that letter of interest from March to February, so letting us know earlier that they are interested in working Explore. Compensation was discussed on the educator side letter regarding how much they're paid each day. And then hours worked between the various bargaining units was discussed, because that differs between nurses, between educators, between paras. So again, this is coming forth to you as a first read for those eight side letters. I welcome any questions you might have about those.
Any questions from the board? Okay.
I have a quick question. Currently, I know we added some SNEA bargaining groups, how many are there?
There are nine bargaining groups, yeah, and then we also bargain with the Teamsters, so there's ten units that we...
Ten units.
Teamsters represent transportation personnel.
So nine under one umbrella, and then one?
Nine under SNEA, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Range. We'll move on to item 7.03, student nutrition management expenditures, and Dr. Travis Shaw will join us at the podium.
Good evening. It's a time of year when we bring forward recommendation for student nutrition management services. As you may recall, back in January of '21, the board did approve a one-year contract with the option of four one-year renewals. Airmark was the company that was recommended at that time. The recommendation tonight is to bring forward to you the third of the four one-year renewals to bring Airmark and continue our agreement with them as the nutrition services contractor. DESI does recommend that not only does the board approve the contract renewal, but you approve the expenses related to food, supplies, Airmark wages and benefits, as well as other items, because they actually have those expenditures ahead of time, we reimburse them. Their management and administrative fee is tied to what is the CPI within their contract. Estimated on this particular recommendation is between December to December of '22 and '23 is 5.2%. That actually, in May, we get the exact amount, but these are estimates at this time. That equates to the fee that you have below. The estimated food supplies are based on 4,090,500 meals, which is actually a 7.3% increase over prior year, so the involvement in our food service is up. So that does have an increase of about 10.27% in food costs. Supplies are actually down in this estimate, almost 26%, a lot of that's due to less paper goods that are being used within our cafeterias. And then you can see the administrative and management fees represent 327,250. Airmark manages all of the food service, our staff that's in the building, those are SPS staff, and so the administrative salary and benefit reimbursement is $935,000 for their team. And one thing to point out and remind you all is that we receive reimbursement for all meals served, and so traditionally, the amount that we spend out, we get back, and we, our goal is to be cost neutral. Obviously during COVID, that was, we increased that balance quite a bit, because everything was free at that point in time, and so we received the highest reimbursement. But Airmark has done a tremendous job in my time, here in the last seven years, of making sure that that budget is balanced, and that we don't go into the red, and that they do a very good job with that. They, Kim Keller and her team are amazing group to work with. I think we're now in thirty-two or thirty-three years of partnership with Airmark, and what I love so much about them is they listen, they get feedback, they work well with not only administration, but they work well within our buildings. They are truly kid-focused, and they want to make sure that they're making a difference, and they understand the importance of making sure our kids are fed. So I don't have any reservation in making this recommendation this evening to increase and to add one more year of renewal for Airmark.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
I'd like to say something that's consistent with something I've said before, and I see value in what Airmark's doing, they seem to be doing a good job, and I trust your opinion and expertise on that, and I'm happy that we've had this longstanding relationship with them. Dr. Lathan, I would, this may not seem like a big deal to some people, but just something I've noticed that I'd just like to draw to your attention, that I think we could improve on, in particular, as we are, I think, all in agreement, that we have challenges with student behavior. Breakfast, when we serve breakfast to our students, one thing I've noticed, and I know we have some challenges with the time to prep, the cost that we have to provide the food, there's certain things that are, it's not, we're not gonna make them, we're not gonna make them eggs and fruit and ham, and like, you're not gonna do like a big spread, right? It's gotta be kind of quick, grab and go, a lot of packaged stuff. And we particularly have challenges within the elementary schools, maybe, with the, I don't know, just the facilities to be able to cook a meal, right? So I understand there are certain restrictions, but that being said, we provide a lot of breakfasts to our students, and one thing I've noticed, and just through having my own kids in school and being able to look at the menus and things that are offered, we do tend to provide choices, and we're providing choices to, you know, six, seven, eight, nine-year-olds, and to be honest, we know what they're gonna choose, and the end of that path is often something that sets them up for probably not the best day from a behavior standpoint. And what I'm talking about is basically just sugar and processed carbs. Our breakfast items, if we look at them, if we look at the choices they can make, for example, you know, I looked on, I think, I did this on Sunday, I looked at what the menu option was for Monday, and you basically have three choices you can make. There's like a main item, there's a breakfast sandwich, and then there's a couple different types of cereals that are very sugary cereals, and then a, like a pack of like, basically graham crackers, I guess. And then you pick a fruit, and then at the bottom, there's chocolate milk. Well, the common theme there is sugar, sugar, sugar. So for example, a choice a kid might make is cinnamon toast crunch, 12 grams of sugar, raisins, 12 grams of sugar, chocolate milk, 48 grams of sugar. So when you're giving young kids to start the day, just sugar, 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 and processed carbs, I mean, how do we expect their behavior to be? And if we acknowledge that there are issues with behavior, this is a thing that I think we should look at, that does have an impact on that. And I, you know, I'm not saying we have to go crazy and it be like completely healthy, but the sugar content, particularly to start the day, I don't think sets us up for success, and I think just creates more challenges in our buildings with behavior issues that ultimately, we're gonna have to deal with. So I would, I guess, ask you or challenge you, I don't know if that's something that you've ever looked into or ever even really thought about, but I really think that this is something we can improve on, that'll have a big impact on students' ability to learn. And we hear a lot, well, students can't learn if they're hungry. Well, okay, but I would almost take some level of hunger before I would take just loads of sugar in a child, in terms of their ability to focus and pay attention.
So I know we work with nutritionists as it relates to developing our menus, and Kim, I don't know if you want to speak to that?
So all of our menus have to be nutritionally analyzed by DESI and USDA requirements. They require us to have whole grains, fruits, vegetables, all of those kinds of things. So everything that we do is looked at on a weekly basis. So one menu might be higher in sodium or calories, but next week, or next day, it might be a little lower, but they look at a whole week's time of menus to analyze the nutritionals. And all of our sugars are reduced sugar, so it might look like a regular cereal, but they're all reduced sugars, all those kinds of things. One of the things that USDA currently doesn't look at is added sugars, but that's in the proposed bill for '25-'26. So that is something that USDA guidelines are looking at changing.
And I understand this stuff is regulated per the USDA, but I guess what I'm saying is, what I'm seeing, I mean, we can do better. Like, just, there's the standard of what the federal government issues, and then there's, you know, what we think is best for our students. And I admit that, yeah, you know, cinnamon toast crunch, look, they put a bunch of vitamins in there, right? Okay, great, but also, there's 12 grams of sugar, and then you're washing it down with chocolate milk, which is 48 grams of sugar, so...
And we do have whole grains, and we do have white milk available as well, so...
Not on that day that I looked at, but yes, I do.
It might not say that, but white milk is available every single day. It might not be on that particular menu you were looking at.
And even if it's, and that's another question I have, yeah, it may be available, but who's gonna get the breakfast sandwich, apple slices, and a white milk when you can get, you know, chocolate milk?
And I mean, most of the kids get white milk when they're getting cereals, they're not getting chocolate milk on their cereals, at least I don't see that a lot, so again, it's a choice, and I'd have to disagree with you whether a child would be hungry or have something that they're gonna eat. I don't ever want a child to go hungry, so, and I don't want just healthy trash cans, I want them to be able to pick something and eat something so that they are ready to learn. You are right, kids can't learn if they're hungry, I mean, that's one of the basic things, so...
I appreciate that input, but I will disagree, and this is my seat to be able to do that with, and it is very important that we don't load our kids with sugar.
I would agree with that.
Kids will eat if they're hungry, and if we give them healthy options, then they will be able to choose those options. If we are giving them options loaded with sugar, they will choose that, and our teachers will suffer in the process, trying to teach these kids when they're all whacked out on sugar. And it's not good for their health in general, and I think that that is a known scientific fact. Thank you.
And one other thing, I'd just say that with all the regulations that we have, we do follow the USDA guidelines. We're getting ready to go into an administrative review in March, and that's one of the things that they look at, is to ensure that everything that we offer on a menu does meet those nutritional guidelines that are set forth by the USDA.
Thank you, Kim.
All right, thanks, guys.
Any further questions?
I have a question. Did you say that we're on year 32 or 33?
Next question. Ninety-one, we've been here since 1991.
1991.
Oh, consecutively. Wow. So you've seen the introduction of low sodium, and so all these changes. Well, I'm really excited about this USDA coming up, and I wasn't planning on making a comment, but I feel as the physician on the board, that I should weigh in on this. I have to choose my words wisely. We have a lot of hungry children that are obese. That's not okay. Obesity results in early death and suffering as an adult, and it is our job as board members to be the watchdogs, to educate the children and to protect them. And in that capacity, and in my role as a board member and as a physician, it is my belief that children should not have a choice. I do, I do wear, I am an immigrant, so I, and I've come across a lot of hunger issues across culturally, and at the end of the day, if you are hungry, you will eat. And I think as a parent, I've experienced that when I give my children choices, because my parents didn't give me choices, I'm coming around to the fact that maybe I just did it wrong. So I don't understand why chocolate milk is even a choice. There's no nutritional value in chocolate milk, so why don't we just do white milk? I wasn't planning on making any of these comments, but I knew that you would ask me after the meeting perhaps, so I'm gonna put my two cents in there. I'm glad to hear that we do breakfast sandwiches, so I assume that's, it's got eggs? Fantastic. I mean, none of us want cholesterol, but a child should eat an egg every single day. They're myelinating their neurons, so that's the covering of the nerves, and the number one component is cholesterol. So bread and cheese, egg sandwich, piece of fruit, that's breakfast.
If I can echo with Board Member Burns, I agree with you, man, I'll tell you what, just filling kids up with sugar, I think what happens oftentimes is they get on this sugar high, and they have all this energy, and oftentimes, that energy is not necessarily directed in the right direction, or they're sitting and fidgeting in their chairs. Then to top that off, that becomes a discipline problem, I think that's kind of, I'm just assuming that's where you're headed. The other part about that is, when you start to come down off of that sugar high, and then you start losing the students, then the students start falling asleep and that. So I can't say that I, I don't know what the balance is, you know what I mean? But I do think that the kids, they sure the heck want that sugar, and they'll take that before anything else, I think, most of the time. But discipline can be escalated because of the type of diet that the children have. And to echo Dr. Mohammed Kani about obesity, we talk in our communities about so much of our children, they're getting on, they're becoming diabetic, and I don't know that we have the solution, folks. I think it's up to the parents, obviously, hopefully, that the parents are treating or teaching their kids to eat properly and that, but we do have guidelines that we have to abide by, and if I understand you, Mr. Burns, you're looking at just taking a look at the menu and find out how we might be able to kind of slice some of that sugar away and still provide proper lunches in accordance with USDA and district requirements. So I appreciate you bringing that up, it's a very good point.
Board Member Kreis, did you want to go?
The only question I have, Dr. Shaw, I'm sorry, is the 5.2% increase in the CPI for administration and management fee, that just seems high to me.
Well, if you recall, we saw seven points, I don't know the exact number, that we saw that last year, and that was based on how tax rate was set. So the 5.2 from December of '22 to December of '23 is not out of line. And again, these are estimated numbers that we present to the board for the purpose of the approval moving forward. As you know, the food costs, supply costs, all of those are estimated based on participation. That 5.2 is what we know now, when that's actually set in May, then that fee will be established. So that could come down, but that's not out of the line of what we have been seeing in the past.
All right, I'd like to do a quick Google search on CPI, and it seemed to be, you know, below, well below five, not well below five, but you know, four to three, three to four range, so, okay. Thank you.
Is that CPI for food, or is that administrative?
This is specific to food.
I'm sorry, what?
This is specific to food.
Right.
Oh, but I thought here it says administrative and management fee.
Well, that's how the administrative and management fee is established based on the CPI for, that is utilized to determine these particular fees, but it is about the CPI and food, as well as the, well, the food costs are specific to what's there for food costs, so it's, but that CPI number, that index is, that's how the administrative and management fees are calculated.
So both food and administrative fees are both going up by 5.2%, estimated?
Food, our food costs went up 10.27%. Food, our food costs went up 10.27%. And that, part of that is due to the increase in food costs. But also the increase in the number of meals that we serve results in a higher total number of food costs that we have.
That's how economies of scale there. Okay.
Any other board member questions or comments? Okay. I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Kim, part of, part of what Airmark does is, is provide educational tools to our students about healthy options. Is that correct? And to be fair, I have never pulled up a school menu. I've, I've visited schools and seen what they've eaten, but I've never pulled it up. I'm seeing I can get online and look at any single menu for any single day for any single classroom or school within our district. And I appreciate, I'm looking at it right now. I can see the number of calories. I can click it and see how much sugar is in each one. And I encourage board members to take some time to do that. I'm kind of surprised at some of the, not in a bad way. I'm surprised at some of the information here, like chocolate milk having eight grams of protein and lots of calcium in it. So if that is a concern, and I do appreciate Airmark providing those educational opportunities for our students so that they can learn healthy eating habits. Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Okay, moving on to item 7.04, Glendale HVAC upgrade. And Dr. Shaw will remain with us this time.
So this is an item that will be part of the FY '25 capital budget. As you recall, this is about the time of year when we bring forward early bid projects so that we can seek board approval. We can get on contractor schedules. We can get equipment ordered specifically around HVAC equipment projects because those, the lead time on that is a long way out. And so this one is specific to Glendale High School. The band room area, the main office area and science wing, they have reached their end of life cycle and are undersized. And so this project does comprise of replacing all of that equipment and upgrading the systems with two VAV air handlers, one energy recovery ventilation unit, and then four rooftop units as well as new HVAC controls. The units that service the band room are original to that area. 2000 was when those were put in. And then the other areas, the main office and science wing were done in 2009. Those are a carrier brand, which have now become obsolete. So they are 15 years old. In comparison, when you look at this, and I did the same thing, and I thought, wow, that's a lot of money for those areas. We are talking about large, large units. We've got even, we've got a 50-ton unit. We have 20-ton units, three 10-ton units. Most homes are, you know, in the two to four range, depending on the size of home. So very big equipment, very large and expensive equipment. And so this, there were three bids that we did receive for this particular project. The amount is $780,000 and the recommended contractor is MSI Constructors. Again, this is, this will be part of the capital project list. But in order to be able to get this work done over the summer, which is when it needs to happen, we do bring these items to the board early so that we can seek approval and move forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. Thank you for explaining that you are also surprised, not surprised, but why it's such a large number. Because I was going to ask you, what's a square footed? Okay, now I get it. I understand. So these are really large units. And it's not just inflation.
Right. But inflation is part of it. We have seen a significant increase in mechanical costs.
And it sounds like these are unique or special units.
Well, a lot of them are rooftop and they, like the 50-ton unit is a large unit to take care of a large space. So more than likely, that, that's probably for like the band room, a large open space. And so when you think about your science classrooms are larger than normal classrooms. You've got a big office area. So it's, it's a little bit complex from what would, you would just see in like a regular elementary classroom because of the different specific spaces.
And you said that this was part of the capital project list. So I'm understanding correctly. So this is in, you were expecting this in the refresher cycle. This is coming up. It's not, it's budgeted for.
It will be part of next year's capital budget.
Okay, so this is part of the routine of?
We anticipate that capital budget next year being around $15 million. And this would be one of those projects. And traditionally, we bring about anywhere from a third to a half of that budget ahead of time to the board so that we can do this work. If we don't, we're always in the rears and we never get the work done when we need to and when it's budgeted for. And so this has been our process probably now for five years that we bring projects as early bid so that we can, again, seek that approval from our board to move forward.
And then in the long-range plan, this is slated just so as?
Right. So I would say the, the, the equipment in the band room being from 2000, I mean, they have utilized that and utilized it until they just can't utilize it anymore. We did pass a bond issue, I believe, back in 2006 and 2009. And part of that was HVAC equipment and some of that is done. So we will start seeing more and more HVAC pieces of equipment, systems that we're going to need to be replacing. Because when you utilize a bond issue for lifecycle items, then you've got to have a way to pay for those moving forward.
I guess what I'm asking is, these are the oldest units in the district, 2000.
Some of them, yeah, 2000.
There's more?
Yeah, well, you don't normally keep them that long. 24 years is a long time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, so are you surprised you only got three bids?
No.
Are you not starting to see that number of bids starting to go up?
It's been all over the place. We've seen two, we've seen five. It depends on the type of work. It depends on their availability, the amount of time it takes. There's, it's, it's not been consistent.
Was this the lowest bid?
The, I believe so, yes.
Is this someone we've worked with before?
We have, yes.
They local?
They, I don't know specifically where their office is, but I do believe they are local.
They are. I looked it up. They are located in Springfield.
Okay. It's interesting, you mentioned the, the bond funded a bunch of HVAC in 2006.
My understanding was 2006 and '09.
So how are we preparing for that and budgeting and long-range planning?
It's in things like this that we try to stay ahead of it. We try to be proactive. We utilize what we have as software called Capital Forecast. We're looking at what is that replacement cycle. We, we tend to do multiple HVAC projects a year and that's part of this. So it's, it's something that we just continue to plan for. It's a priority that we don't start reducing capital budgets. So we continue to transfer dollars into capital so we can plan for these things.
This one wasn't part of that bond. This was from 2000, you said, right?
Well, the band room equipment was from 2000.
Right.
The other areas were from 2009. So I would have to go back and do the actual research, Kelly, to know for sure.
But if we did a big chunk of projects in 2006 and 2009.
Yes.
Then in six to nine years, we should see a wave.
And a lot of it depends on the usability of it. Depends on how well it was taken care of over the years. Depends on the quality of it. I mean, but yes, you, you have to work to have a progression and a, a plan in place.
How, how does this fit into a plan? Dr. Lathan, is that part of your, I guess, a long-range facilities plan?
It's actually part of our strategic plan. Look at our long-range facilities needs.
But the actual, to have that is, but I guess, do we currently have documents in hand that show us this, this, this graph for our future budgeting needs for capital projects that, that are taking into account this exact sort of data where we know in six years, we're going to have a spike in needed projects?
We actually do have that data. Yeah, it's, we pull it, we, we use a software called Dude Solutions. And we have within that called Capital Forecast. And so it has all of our capital inventory in the district that has been implemented. Every time we replace, it gets updated. We put lifecycle data in there to know, okay, when is it supposed to be replaced? How long will it take? We do that for our roofs, mechanical equipment, even down to playground equipment, to mulch. I mean, all of those things that we spend a significant amount of dollars on, that data is available, that we are able to track that. Now, it's a tracking tool, but I will tell you that it's our people, it's our boots on the ground that really determine that as much as anything. Because they see, you can have a piece of equipment that's only supposed to last 15 years and there's absolutely nothing wrong with it. And we're not just going to replace to replace. But you may have a piece of equipment that's supposed to last 15 years. And in 12 years, it's giving you all kinds of fits and you're having to replace it. So we do try to be as proactive as possible. But there are times when unfortunately you have to be reactive to certain equipment just because of the unknown.
So will this information be included in a long-range plan in a way that the board can absorb it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sure it's something that's part of the facility plan that's looked at on an annual basis as part of the budget. Is that correct?
We utilize the data, yes. When we, when, when, when all of the capital requests are submitted, we do have in place already what we call placeholder budget amounts.
Right.
And so we know every single year, we need to be spending X number of dollars on specific things. We also then evaluate all of the requests that are submitted by the departments and schools to determine where those fit, what those needs are, and prioritize that. Because you only have so much money.
I understand that and that makes sense. And I see that in our budgeting process, that we see that on an annual basis. Oh, we're going to, another year, another $15 million in capital projects, right? But what he said that made me perk up was if we spent an exorbitant amount in 2006 or 2009, then we would see a spike. So approximately six years from now, maybe that 15, we go 15, 15, 15, 15. And then maybe it's 25, we got a plan for that year or 30 the next year because of when we actually replace them historically. That, I guess that's what I was getting to and not just the, the standard every year. Are we really planning for those, those big hit years?
Well, and keep in mind, the last couple of years, due to federal stimulus dollars, that capital budget has been increased significantly for that very reason. I mean, I think this year our budget's about $33 million in capital. So, but we can't spend that much every year. We don't have the money to do that much.
Any further questions from board members? Thank you, Dr. Shaw.
Thank you.
Move on to item 7.05, student device purchase. And Mr. Bruce Douglas will join us at the podium.
Good evening. The first item before you that I have is our just annual student device purchase. This purchase will cover two major items. So first is our kindergarten devices, which are due for refreshes. They will no longer receive updates this next year with those iPads. Just under 1,900 touchscreen Chromebooks that we'll be purchasing. And then also for grades one through nine, we'll be looking at just under 6,800 Chromebooks. So total dollar amount, just around $2.3 million. So I'm happy to take any questions you might have at this time.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I'm happy to start things off.
Okay.
Trying to compose myself a little bit. I'm honestly a little surprised that this is the presentation. I saw this on the document or on the board docs leading into this. And as is usually the case with a study session, I like to hear the presentations, hear the context before I start, because I can have a lot of questions based on the information that we have. And sometimes that stuff gets cleared up by presentations. But with the history of this, which I guess I'll recap a little bit in case anyone's listening that's not aware. Last year, it was proposed to us to replace the iPads in kindergarten with touchscreen Chromebooks on a one-to-one basis for every, one, meaning one device for every student we have enrolled in kindergarten. And that was quite an ordeal and did not pass. We had requested more information on that. More information was provided. It still did not pass. And I know I, for one, had left the door open that the issue, for me at least, was that it was one-to-one. And we're saying that we're trying to go away from as much screen time. But on the other hand, we are spending our dollars in a one-to-one basis for more screens. And in particular, in the youngest grades, that was a concern to me, particularly K through three, probably even all through elementary school. So that was quite an ordeal this time last year. And I don't understand why this is just being thrown back in front of us without any, any, I just don't understand how essentially this board with one person changing votes it down four to three. And then it comes back in front of us and just, without even acknowledging it, is just, yep, we want to go back to one-to-one Chromebooks. So what am I missing here? Because my, certainly nothing has changed from my point of view. We have a pending requested comprehensive technology plan that we were promised would come. And I understand that there's a timeline on that that wouldn't be until the end of the school year. But it seems reasonable to me to at least get some sort of update on that or that process before being asked to spend however much the portion of this is on the kindergarten part alone. So nothing has changed for me in terms of, I don't see why we would want to go one-to-one. Now, something was confused after that vote last year that I didn't realize until after I was in the community and talking with some kindergarten teachers in particular. That, for many kindergarten teachers, became a, well, we want touchscreen Chromebooks because they're better than iPads for use in the classroom? Which I can totally understand now. That was never really brought to my attention at the time until after the fact. But to me, it was never about iPads or Chromebooks. It was about screens. It was about, we don't, why do we need one-to-one devices? If we're saying we're only going to test them a couple of times a year, middle of the year, end of year on devices, and the rest of the time, we're trying to do less screen time and more one-on-one engaged interaction, more pencil and paper, then why do we need one for every kid? Find, find a better way to spend our dollars that allows us to, to, to then spend our money on other consumables, pencil and paper, other sorts of curriculum resources and things that allow us to promote one-on-one teaching and not screen time. So I would like to clarify from last year, my position was never that the iPads were better than the Chromebooks. And I'm sorry that the result of that vote last year left teachers with iPads when they preferred Chromebooks. The door was left open to come back, to purchase some touchscreen Chromebooks in a way that it was not one-to-one and could be shared. And we could maximize our dollars for what the teachers needed, but also committing to what I thought we were committing to, which was less screen time. So sorry to rant here, but I guess we've got a couple of weeks here for this vote again, but here we go again. And it's kind of been brought in front of us, I guess, just, okay, what are you going to do? You know, pass it or else. Yet I, no information has changed or hasn't even been presented to us. So I guess I'll just say, unless I hear otherwise, my vote will be no. And my vote will be no because I want to commit to not being one-to-one in these early ages and being so dependent on technology when, when the cost of it is so high. I mean, that money can go so far towards things that will be so much more impactful in K through three to help us make sure that our kids can read by third grade, which we know is such an important time. And the other thing I'd like to add, which I know that I've asked for several times is, give us a plan first before we just unleash the devices on the students. It just seems reasonable that we would have a plan that kids go through in this grade or at this time through labs or training or whatever it is. They go through keyboarding, they go through digital citizenship, they go through learning how to use operating systems before we just go one-to-one and spend so much money of the district's resources on these devices and just give them to them. It just seems like it needs to be much later in their life after they have a chance to actually learn how to use them properly. And we have actually put forth a plan to show how we're going to do that, which I hope will be in this comprehensive technology plan. But we're not there yet. And here I am, being asked to make this vote again, which I can't make without those guarantees and without updates to that end.
So a few items off of the technology plan, just some updates there. So our three departments now have drafted their three-year plans to kind of lay out these refresh cycles along with planning for our software refreshes as well and starting to look forward to when are these things happening? As we kind of look at our current device situation, we know that we have these devices next year that will not be receiving updates. So absolutely understand in terms of that timing of that plan, we do have devices that will not be getting those updates heading into next year.
What do you mean by those updates?
Updates to the operating system, to the browsers as well. So that's both a security item and a compatibility with our curricular resources. In certain portions, yeah. We've seen that, but when they stop receiving those updates, whether it's on an iPad where the apps no longer function, or if it's with a Chrome browser on the Chromebooks where it's not compatible with things like Canvas, for example. Canvas only utilizes or supports a certain number of versions backwards. And so we do have to account for that to ensure that the devices actually do function with our curricular resources that are available at these times. Another piece of update for our technology plan is our instructional technology coordinators have been meeting monthly to kind of review those ISTI standards. So exactly what you're talking about. So what is the correct standard for a student to be going through with technology at each grade level? Their focus first at our elementary levels, exactly for the reasons you just said of how do we ensure that we're getting the right digital citizenship pieces, but also how do they utilize the device? How are they learning the operating system? How are they learning typing? How are they learning how to use the touchpad, for example? And so with the Chromebooks, another piece that has come together with these early grade levels is a piece called clever badging. So clever is a software that we utilize that facilitates logins and also data passback between our system and all of our vendors, or many of our vendors. What clever badging will allow our youngest to do is actually have a QR code they log in with that the teacher is able to help them with. So that actually reduces that time to log into the device, especially at our lowest grade levels. And we're gonna be looking at implementing that next year and that's kind of part of what the feedback from our integration team has really brought forward. They're also looking at those ISTI standards very heavily, working with those technology teachers in our elementary schools to really implement that early on and how we can really plan that out. They're also working on their three-year plan of implementation for those ISTI guidelines. And then we have begun some of that feedback piece in terms of what, what does that comprehensive plan need to have? So when I say those department plans, they're really in a draft form depending on where our budget takes us, where our input takes us and where those ISTI plans are, are moving as well. Because the goal with the technology is to support the curricular devices, the curricular resources that we have. We want to make sure that they are able to access those. So when we're talking that screen time piece, it is that balance and I think you've seen that with some of those curricular adoptions. We still have these digital resources, but we really trust the teachers in terms of how they're utilizing it and that varies a lot by grade level. So that utilization of those ISTI standards really are kind of the heart and focus of those instructional coordinators work.
Thank you for all that insight. To me, where this leaves us as the board, and I, this has happened more than once, the way it went this time last year should be clear that there's not, at least at that time, there was not buy-in for us to replace all these devices one-to-one at the kindergarten level. That was made clear.
No, it wasn't. It was made clear by half the board.
Let me finish. The board decided by a majority vote that that wouldn't happen last year. So we've had 12 months to formulate some sort of plan and to put something back in front of the board and have discussions all along. We could have been talking about this all along. Then it gets put in front of us with, again, what I'm hearing is the idea of, well, next year, the iPads aren't gonna work right anymore, so you just gotta do it. We've had a year to figure this out. We've had a year to answer the questions that were put on the table last year and, and they haven't been answered.
Sure. So Board Member Byrne, just first of all, it's been 10 minutes, so I'm gonna move on to another board member. Again, although Vice President Kreis and I set the agenda, we don't approve the agenda. And so it, it is an annual student device refresher that is brought in front of the board. If you have questions, we all see the presentations well before we're coming to sit at this board table. If you wanted additional information.
There is no presentation attached with this.
And this is the first that I'm hearing from you that you would have liked a presentation. You received this.
I mentioned this, obviously, I voted against this last year.
You said you.
And to great extent, we had these discussions.
Board Member Byrne, you've had, you've also had.
12 months.
You've had a year to get answers to your questions and if you want to vote no on this item in two weeks, that's fine.
I posed my questions.
If you have additional questions.
The administration had had a year to give us answers to those questions.
There are still questions that you have. You have two weeks to ask Dr. Lathan and her team to answer those questions, but as you indicated, you've had a year to have those, those questions answered. So I'm gonna move on to any other board members at this time who have a comment or question with regard to this item.
I'm not so certain that we ought to go back and listen to that meeting and to determine what was said. My understanding was that I, I'll just speak for myself. I wanted pencil to paper to those early age, early school classes. And then we had a discussion with regards to the third, third grade in order to take the map testing that they had to have, the experience using the Chromebooks. And so I understood from the third grade to the sixth grade that the third graders would actually have the, a lab with the Chromebook and yet they had an opportunity or the option, if the parent wanted it, that they can take a Chromebook home. So I'm, I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying, Mr. Byrne, and I concur with that, that position. And I think that maybe, I, I'm, I'm just gonna go back to the meeting and figure it out myself. Because right now, I, I, I'm with you. I don't believe that we need to be putting this technology, these screens in front of these kids at this age. I think that they would be much better served if we would teach them with pencil to paper at the young age. That would be my position.
Thank you, Board Member McCoskey. There are other board member comments or questions at this time?
I do. I have some questions. I didn't understand what you meant when you said that they won't be supported. You mean if we make the purchase next year, they won't be supported, the new devices or the old devices?
The old devices.
The old devices?
Yes.
Okay, got it. So the new devices, the lifecycle is, and I know that since they're not going home, they have a longer life, but they are electronic devices. They just out, they're outdated. Is that four years?
It actually depends. So Google has a lifecycle piece, but then we have the physical piece. You're exactly right. We've seen a decrease in repairs, so.
Right, but what's the software component?
The software, Google just increased it, I think last year, from four years to six years. So we should expect a longer lifecycle in those kind of K through eighth grade pieces.
And since we haven't seen the technology plan, we don't know what we're gonna go with. We don't know if we're gonna stick with a Chrome-based. We could go with something else. Has there been any consideration in the discussions about reducing that number from one-to-one to a set that the students use to learn?
The, the feedback that we have received so far is that it is still desired to have that one-to-one in terms of how they manage their classroom, how they utilize those resources.
And I have a couple more questions, but I, I mean, I think it is, we all want the students to unquestionably be proficient with technology, right? But unlike other things, like sports or a trade or a skill, this is the one area, and I'm, I'm very emphatic about this. I've researched this extensively. This is the one area where that does not hold true. So what I'm trying to say is, it's actually quite the opposite. The students that are most advanced and most digitally savvy are the students that receive technology later in life. So this idea that in order to be a academically proficient student, in order to advance academically in fifth, sixth, seventh grade, you need to see a computer in kindergarten, is absolutely false. In fact, it's absurd. It's absurd that I have to have this conversation in this year.
And Board Member Mohammed Kani.
So, I'm gonna go with my question.
If you have any questions for our speaker.
I do.
Just make sure that we're not directing anger towards our speaker.
Oh, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm just really passionate.
Okay, just make sure it's not directed towards Mr. Douglas.
Oh, no, it's not. He knows me. Of course it's not. Okay. So I do have a question, but I have to lead up to it so you understand where I'm coming from. So I have a couple of concerns because, yes, we have been in this pursuit of being more responsible with our screen time and having a balanced curriculum. And so the Chromebooks aren't going home, which has helped with the longevity of their lifetime. But unfortunately, what I'm hearing, and this is something I've communicated with Dr. Lathan previously, is that it has translated into nothing going home, especially at the elementary level. It's not until the end of the unit that the paperwork that the students have been working on, right? It's a lot of print, fantastic. But the problem is the parents aren't partnering with us. So what, there are students who go home and talk about, yay, we did addition. But then there's a lot of students, I had two of them. What hap, what did you do in math? We did math. That's all I got. So without that workbook, which is why I was such a proponent of trying to get workbooks, that piece is missing and there's just a palpable paucity or just a complete absence of homework. And I, trust me, there's a question coming. Another particular concern I have with respect to middle school is that since the Chromebooks aren't going home and there are some, there's a perception that these guidelines are strict. For the students that are struggling, that need that extra time, it's becoming problematic. Because the reality that we are living in right now is that in middle school, pretty much all the curriculum is still digital. So we, math is digital, English is digital, science is digital, only the social studies books. And those are classroom sets. I didn't realize that. I went back and looked at the presentation and sure enough, so, so books are not going home. So in middle school, nothing is going home. The question is coming. So while I have been a staunch proponent of responsible technology, it was never meant to hinder academics and learning. And so I realize that we're in this process of reevaluating our curriculum. Our curriculum cycle has been shortened so that we, we're absolutely committed, and Dr. Lathan is, to optimizing our curriculum so that we can provide both print and digital to the students and to the teachers. But we're not there yet. So my question is, I have two questions. One, if I approve, you know, 2.380, you know, basically 2.4 million, with that sort of investment, if you don't reduce the number of touch Chromebooks, right? With this investment, will we have enough money to buy material, so print material, to fulfill our commitment to optimizing curriculum?
Yes, based on our recommendations of the curriculum materials that we need.
Yes, that's a yes, okay. And then I have another yes/no question. It is my understanding that any student, whether they're elementary or middle school, if their parents want to and will take responsibility for and need the Chromebook to go home so that they can work with their child or so that the student can finish their work, are they able to get the Chromebook to be, to go home with the student?
Yes, they can check it out, yes.
I realize that this has been communicated, but it's still a problem. So I'm glad that I asked you and you said yes and now it's on, on record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from board members?
I have a question. I wasn't on the board, but I was sitting on the back row last year when the discussion was happening, so I was paying close attention. And so please correct me if my memory is not accurate, but as the discussion was taking place, and I think it was Dr. Frederick, said, why don't we ask the teachers what it is that they recommend? And so that survey was made. I don't remember how many teachers were surveyed. And then two weeks later, the board came back and was given the information that, again, I don't remember the ratio, but pretty overwhelmingly, the teachers that are using these tools said, yes, we want the Chromebooks. And so I was a bit surprised that night when the board voted to not do that. I'm not minimizing anyone's position regarding that, but, but as we look to our experts, the teachers, if this is what they say they need, for whatever their reason, I don't know, maybe it's time to ask them again, but I have to trust too that people are really monitoring very closely the screen time. I think everybody up here is concerned about that. I, I mean, I am. And I like the paper pencil, but this is the biliterate generation. They have to learn to work with both. And so, you know, again, I just take us back to a year ago when I was sitting out there and everybody else was up here. The teacher said, this is what we need. So I, I guess I'm still curious if that's still the case. And, and I don't want to minimize the fact that everyone's knowledge of this has been heightened based on board discussion. And I'm, I'm not minimizing what may be happening to the brain. I mean, you have expertise in that, I don't. So, you know, I just want to listen very carefully, but I do go back a year ago to asking the boots-on-the-ground people, what do you need? And them coming back and saying, this is what we need, and then the board went a different direction.
I would like to make a comment. We sat here just a couple of hours ago with lots of feedback to the teachers who were here about how much we value and appreciate their expertise and recognize how hard they worked to make sure that our students get the best educational opportunities. Every single board member congratulated and thanked the teachers for their hard work and their expertise that they lend to the classroom to make that dial move that is gonna make us feel better about academic achievement. We did have a poll last year that was presented at a board meeting where we polled the teachers about what they wanted in the classroom. And 65.1% of kindergarten teachers said that they wanted to have a Chromebook. Eighty-five point, 88.9% of those kindergarten teachers said they wanted to have one di- device for each student. If we are saying that we know that the teachers are the experts and that they have the best interest of our students in mind, then I think that we should listen to them. And I did vote to, to, to get the Chromebooks last year on a one-to-one basis. It is a year. What has changed? I don't know that someone's heart and mind hasn't been changed in a year. Yours hasn't, or yours hasn't, but mine stays the same, has stayed the same. I do still support it, but I don't know. We, we are back here again because this is an annual refreshing of technology. Technology is a major part of our educational curriculum and it is important that we refresh them on a regular basis. I too have done a lot of research on this particular topic and I recognize the growth in our information about technology use with young children. We now have meta-analysis that allow for us to look at research across studies and not just one study at a time that may or may not find positive or negative results, but there is not conclusive research to say that students who use technology younger are gonna have less academic achievement. I do not discredit Dr. Mohammed Kani's information about technology and its effects on brain, but we're talking about an exuber, exorbitant amount of, of technology use that students are using that, at that level. These kindergarten teachers aren't asking it for that purpose and we should value their expertise and their knowledge and their skill that we all said that we value and allow them to have the tools that they want in their classroom to, to utilize for educational purposes.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from board members at this time?
Do I get a second opportunity?
I think Board Member Kreis wanted to go first.
Yeah, whoever hasn't spoken, sure.
So what I'm hearing is, you know, the Chromebook technology is better than the iPad. Is that right?
That is what our teachers are preferring, yes.
Yeah, talking, and talking to kindergarten teachers that they, they are not using the screen time that much. And, but they need it for the assessments. And is it true though that they can, the teachers can view the screens with the Chromebooks that they can't with the?
Correct, with the Chromebooks. The, they both have different options. We have a different option for Chromebooks through GoGuardian as well. So that same piece that allows that filtering allows some of that ownership as well.
Okay. And in your opinion, Dr. Lathan, nothing has changed from last year as far as the kindergarten teachers using, wanting to use Chromebooks?
That is correct. Nothing's changed.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bruner, just in answer to your question, there's, there was context within that vote. As is always the case, it's a binary vote, but there is context. And to be abundantly clear, the context of that was certainly not that we don't value our teachers' appearance. our teachers' opinions. And it was that we wanted to best equip our teachers to do their jobs in the best capacity. The vote we were provided was a simple yes or no. I for one left the door open to say, had this been one to four or some other option where, that makes more sense, then we could go down that road, but that option was not presented to us. So it was not about Chromebook versus iPad. It was not about Chromebook or no Chromebook. It was about, and I heard acknowledgement from Dr. Thomas Tate and from you, Mr. Christ, about trusting our teachers to not have them using these all the time. That we are, to some effect, however they worded it, striking some better balance with that. So if that's the case, if we are acknowledging that we need them for testing and we're not using them all the time, then why on earth do they need to be one-to-one? And that hasn't been answered. And I get that we had a poll that polled some teachers and, but I also get that if you ask people what they want, they're going to tell you what they want. It's not necessarily what they need. We unfortunately have to lead this district and make tough decisions. We have to lay over the impact of what the needs are with also the budget. That is our job as board members. Teachers do, are, are not responsible for those decisions, for the budget decisions. We receive their input, we have to decide with the lens of the budget, what is the best use of the dollars? And in my mind, what I'm hearing is, we need to test, they need them to some limited capacity, but I don't understand why we're being presented, again, one-to-one. I could get on board with something else. I want them, it sounds like for the purposes of testing, a touchscreen Chromebook would be superior to an iPad. It sounds like our iPads are getting ready to phase out. For all those reasons, I would love for them to be able to test in some capacity on a better device that is more useful to get more accurate results and to make their jobs easier. But it does not seem to be cohesive with the thought that we are doing less screen time. We're not putting our money where our mouth is. And to follow up, Ms. Kincaid, about your comments. I, you've made similar comments many times about the way that I choose to serve in my capacity. So I'm going to acknowledge it now, I've ignored it before. This idea of, well, you've had so many times to ask questions, yet I haven't heard anything. You've had so much time, you've had opportunity, you haven't asked questions. I will serve the way that I want to serve, and you can serve the way that you want to serve, and I trust each board member to serve the way that they want to serve. I explained, there was no presentation attached with this. All I get is in front of me, 1,867 Chromebooks to be purchased with zero context after the firestorm we had on this very issue 12 months ago. So no, it would not have been logical for me over the last 12 months to continue to ask questions about something that was done. But it would have been very reasonable for the administration, when they come back and present this to us again, to understand the context from last year and to head that off with answering of some of those questions, with what we're doing differently, why we're doing it this way, why we're proposing this again. So I had very good reason not to ask questions ahead of time because I didn't have the full context. Thank you.
Any further board member comments or questions at this time?
I would like to make another comment. Oh, I should allow you.
You're fine. If you want to make a comment, go ahead and make a comment.
Do you have a comment to make?
I don't have a comment to make. If I had a comment to make, I would make my comment.
Because this is round two, right?
It is round two, yes.
So I agree with Board Member Byrne, this is not a matter of not wanting to provide for our teachers. This is about keeping the educational needs, not the wants. We all want a lot of things, it's what we need, to make sure that we provide what our students need and the resources that our teachers need to teach and for our students to learn. But we also have to provide fiduciary oversight. So I'm trying to wrap my head around the idea that I'm told on one hand that these are going to be used minimally, we'll say 10%. The reality is they're going to be used more than we think. We're doing math digitally, right? That's IM, it's being delivered like that. We have workbooks, but we need them, we absolutely need them. So I, I don't know how it figures into the day. I don't, I truly don't know the percentage of the day that it's being used. If it is being used, and I need to know this before I'm being asked to vote on it, if this is something that you have to use every single day, then I see the value in, in a one-to-one. Because it's going to be hard to coordinate, well, first of all, if I'm just a one classroom, like one first grade, they would obviously have it. But let's take, like, there's two classrooms, two first grade, two kindergartens. If I have to use it every single day, it's kind of hard to share it because, you know, you don't know what the timing is and it makes it difficult. But if it's truly just for testing, for learning, digital citizenship type, you know, just the basics, like, like a computer lab in the eighties and nineties, right? And that, that way I could see it being an every-other-day thing, right? We're getting the computers out to learn about the computers, to learn how to use them and then to test on it. So if that's how they're going to be used and not to deliver curriculum, you see, they're, it's like a, they're different things. One is to learn how to operate the computer. Then I think that we could get into a sharing situation in those buildings that have more than one kindergarten per building. But if it is actually being used for delivering curriculum, for delivering instruction, then it does hinder that kindergarten teacher to be able to schedule their day, right? How to plan their day around the idea that, you know, I might not have this. To me, it's, it's going to end up being like a pencil, right? You absolutely need it. So I would appreciate it if I could get that piece answered in terms of what precisely is the use, not the, I don't want to hear, oh, we're only using it 5% of the time. I get that we are limiting that, and I'm so appreciative of that. That's fantastic, we're doing a really good job with that. But it's really precisely what it is, what is it that it's being used for so that it can help me be able to make that informed vote? And I also respectfully would like to ask that if it is not being used to deliver curriculum, I don't know, IM starts in first grade, I don't know what they do in kindergarten. If it's really just to learn about software, learn about the computer, learn typing skills, just those early rudimentary things, would there be a consideration for decreasing that amount so that we can afford to buy more workbooks for the students as Dr. Lathan has requested, which I'm still kind of jazzed about, still four hours later? So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further board member comments or questions at this time?
I have one. I'd be interested to hear a year later from principals and from teachers.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you.
You will remain at the podium for item 7.06, which is the E-Rate Purchase Approval.
And just like last year, this is a rinse-and-repete presentation, so I'm just going to own that upfront. But every year, we also go through our E-Rate purchases, so this is part of our refresh plan, part of our cycling. So sorry for covering some of that same content. I also run the touch base that I'll go through some of those K-Cob items that are included in our E-Rate. We have a lot more this year than we did last year. So again, I'm just going to touch base on what is E-Rate? What's kind of our network background and how's that influenced? What is the financial impact of this specific purchase? And I'll touch base on those other purchases as well, along with what are our next steps? So again, E-Rate is a federal program. It was established in 97 by the FCC. It's all about providing discounts to schools and libraries for the equipment and services related to internet connections. And they're very specific about what qualifies there, and I'll talk about that here in just a minute. The E-Rate cycle is very well-defined by the federal government, so we have to follow a strict bidding process. So we have a Form 470, we complete that usually in the timeframe of September through December. Then we have to request those funds, and that is awarding that bid and then signing those contracts, basically. And that has to be done by March 27th, 2024, this year, for us to file our Form 71. That then goes into a review cycle by USAC, which is the governmental agency that oversees the federal E-Rate dollars. That's completed in that April to August timeframe, which then leads into the funding. So once they review it, they make sure we've got all our paperwork, make sure that we have followed the appropriate bidding procedures here and that we are truly meeting the requirements to receive these discounts. So then comes the funding, they issue us a letter saying, you are approved for this reimbursement, you may move forward with those purchases and those services. And then the invoicing process begins. So there are two categories of E-Rate. So category one is all about data transmission and/or internet access, which is fun words. So this is really about how do we get out to the internet and how do we receive those services? Category two is all about our internal network. So as we're looking at this purchase and also the K-Cob items tonight, our wide-area network is what falls under category one. So that is required data transmission for us to be able to have the internet go out to our buildings over our network. This purchase is for the networking equipment that is that internal connection, not out to the internet. And that's also where our firewall comes into play because that is an internal connection under the E-Rate guidelines around the security, and that starts to fall into some of that basic maintenance piece. Category one does not have a budget. Category two has a, a very well-defined budget of $167 per pupil, and that used to be by building, now it's by district, which makes it a whole lot easier to plan around this. And so you can see, it's a five-year allocation. We try to use all of those dollars. So those are the dollars that we're eligible to receive reimbursement on, and that's kind of the discounting portion. So we're on track for this cycle to receive all of those dollars. So just a little bit about our network and kind of our background here. So back in the 2013 bond project, we actually did update our entire network. From there, that was when we actually implemented wireless across every building, it was kind of spotty before then, but this allowed us to ensure that we had wireless access in all of our buildings. From there, we started a wireless refresh, and that happened between 2018, 2023. And as we kind of move forward, we are planning on that seven-year lifecycle for our wireless equipment. And then our wired network, we began that last year with last year's purchase focused on the high schools. We're looking at getting into the middle schools with some of this, along with some of our wireless equipment, and we're anticipating a 10-year lifecycle on that equipment. So as we think about the network, we really prioritize it this way. We want to make sure students can learn and have access to the resources. That means that we want a secure network, a fast network, a reliable network. Then we also have to ensure that our operations are handled as well. So that's our HVAC, that's security systems, that's access control to our buildings, ensuring that, that has to have that network connection for it to be able to operate. And then finally, it's that secure piece. So exactly with our firewall, it's making sure that we are securing our network, both from internal and external threats and using kind of those best practices. So that's how we prioritize our network. So as we really get into the financial impact here, again, there are two different methods for this reimbursement. So the district has traditionally used the Bayer method. What that has meant is that we had to fund the project fully upfront. Then the next year is when we actually receive that reimbursement. Last year, we started transitioning away from Bayer over to SPY, which is actually where the service provider is responsible for getting that reimbursement. And so the way that functions is that they actually send the reimbursement and the invoice to USAC. They receive that reimbursement, meaning that the district is only paying their portion upfront. So you see that with several of those purchases, all of the E-Rate purchases that we have tonight, so this item and the three others that are on K-Cob are utilizing the SPY method, meaning that we have to approve the full amount because technically we are purchasing this full amount, but the vendor is receiving that reimbursement for that other 80% of eligible services, which I'll touch base here in just a second. So the big benefit that we have for the SPY method is that it reduces that cycle. We bid it and then we invoice it, it's all done in two years, whereas with the Bayer method, it was a three-year cycle. We were kind of waiting to get that reimbursement. And there's pros and cons to each, but the SPY method is where we're heading now. So for this purchase with our networking equipment, it was a straight 80/20 split. So as you do the math there, that comes out perfectly because all of these services and equipment here were eligible for E-Rate funding. As we look at firewalls, very little is actually eligible on, to receive that 80% funding. So if we looked at last year's presentation, I think it was a 72, 28% split because of those ineligible items. And that covers both equipment and services. There's, there's certain services that are not eligible under the E-Rate guidelines, and they are heading into a new cycle. So we've been providing feedback, especially around firewalls, that we want that covered because that will, it's a necessary service, we have to have that type of security, and we are hopeful that the federal government will make that change this upcoming cycle. So as we head into next steps, currently what we are seeking is board approval for this purchase. Again, this is just like Dr. Shaw's purchase of HVAC equipment, this would be for next year, and we have to file this form by March 27th to then get in for reimbursement. So the approval tonight then allows us to sign those contracts. Those are all dependent upon budgeting and the reimbursement approval from USAC as well. So next month, we will file those forms, we'll receive that funding letter, hopefully June through September, so that we can then finalize that purchase and then move into receiving those services and equipment. So what questions may I answer at this time?
All right, thank you, Mr. Douglas. And for clarification, of course, we'll be taking the vote at our February 27th meeting. Are there any questions or comments from board members at this time?
I completely understand this. I don't know if it's because it's your presentation or it's because you've done it two years in a row. Sometimes it takes hearing it, right? You did this last year, so totally get it. So my question is related, but completely unrelated, wireless. Do the Chromebooks that the students receive automatically hook into the wireless internet or do they have to put in a code? Do the students have to, you know, put in the password?
They automatically connect to ours.
They automatically connect?
Yeah.
Which means?
To our network.
To our network.
Yeah, and then they can choose to connect to a home network when they're at home, for example.
Okay, so the same device that goes home can choose to. The devices that don't belong to us, that come into our buildings, do they connect to the wireless?
So here's the fun part, it connects through the same equipment, but the way that we secure it, they do not connect to the educational network. So for example, we have an SPS Wi-Fi, that is our educational network. It is secure to only allow our devices.
Only our devices.
And our users. So it uses your authentication when you log into your device tonight, it uses that authentication to allow you to connect to our network.
Even though I'm using my hardware, even though I'm using?
So if you're connecting to, say, the SPS hotspot or the SPS guest network, that is actually segmented off and does not interact with that educational network at all. It all goes over the same equipment, but it's how we secure that network.
So students, can they connect to the hot, to the guest network? Let's say Hillcrest High School provides an educational Wi-Fi, but then there's also a guest Wi-Fi? And so students can connect to their individual devices to that?
Yeah.
But if they bring their own devices, let's say they have a computer that they're just more used to it, right? The keyboard is better. Can they use that because they're going to use it for educational purposes? Can they connect to the education Wi-Fi with permission from the principal?
It's because we also have to ensure it has the proper security updates, it has an antivirus loaded on it, there's other security measures on our devices and because of what else it can touch within our network. And so we segment that off highly, and that's a best practice around cybersecurity is for you to have kind of layers of security. So we were very stringent about what is allowed on the educational network and what can communicate to what. So for a student that brings their own device in, they would connect to the SPS guest network that requires them to actually log in, so you actually sign up, you get a login, you log into that, and it's good for a day. It is still filtered using our firewall technology, and so anything that touches our network is still filtered based upon those categories.
But they're still able to connect to the curricular resources, right?
Yeah, because those are cloud-based resources out on the internet, and so they're still able to access Canvas, McGraw-Hill.
They can do all that, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, just, thank you, Bruce, for standing up in front of firing squad. And just, and this goes for anyone. I mean, when this happens from time to time, it's just, it's not, it's not personal. I just really want to get stuff done in the best interest of the students, but you handed yourself with composure, so thank you for doing that.
Further questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you.
And as a reminder, for all the items under section number seven, new business. And as a reminder, for all the items under section number seven, new business, of course, we'll take a vote on those on February 27th. If any board member has any questions, before that time, be sure to direct them to Dr. Lathan, Vice President Kreis, and myself. We'll move on to item 8.01, change orders and agreements, and Dr. Shaw is with us again.
Yeah, very small list for you this evening totaling $25,458.09. A few FFNE items for IT network connections at our storm shelters and a few minor change orders as well. So I'll happy to answer any questions if you have them.
And the recommended action is that the board approve the change orders and agreements as presented. Do I have a motion? Motion from Board Member McCoskey, second from Board Member Kreis. Is there any discussion or questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will take a vote. Do I still need to do a verbal vote?
It's showing and it's open, but it just takes a while.
Is she the only one that you don't have? Do you want to do a verbal vote, and she can mark it? Okay, the motion that the board approved the change orders and agreements as presented passes seven-nothing. Moving on to item 8.02, storm shelter gymnasium construction bids.
So pleased to present the final two construction bids for our storm shelters on the 2023 bond issue. Those are for Cowden and Holland Elementary. These were both designed by Buxton Cubic Dodd. And you will see on Cowden, we had three different construction companies bid. The lowest responsible bid was from DeWitt Construction for $4,751.84. Holland, we had five different contractors that bid. The lowest responsible bid for that one was Crossland Construction at $4,719,625. In comparison to the previous four that have bid up to this point, Mann and Wilder, if you remember, those exceeded $5 million. Pittman and Watkins were around a little over four and about 4.3. And those were, those two lowest ones were designed by Buxton Cubic Dodd, and so I did ask questions around why did we see difference? It has been about six months since we actually bid those projects. Part of it is we cite, obviously creates a lot of differences in costs, how those buildings connect to the corridors at Cowden. There was actually utility alleyway that was there that created some complexity. There, from Geotech study at Holland, we are expecting to hit substantial rock. So there has been added cost for that particular project. We do have a clay sewer line that needs to be replaced at Cowden. If you remember, we had porta-potties at that school last year, and so this is the time to replace those, and so that's part of that project. The transformer costs from city utilities that were given, again, mechanical side, those have increased significantly as well as the cost for CU to do their work that we don't get pricing for upfront. And so there's an estimated amount that's put into these particular projects based on that assumption. So all of those things did have a relationship to these costs being higher than what the other projects at BKD designed. So we have seen our storm shelters, for the most part, be above what the estimate was. The estimate that we were working off was about $405 a square foot, and these have come in anywhere from about $409 a square foot all the way up to about $540 a square foot. So we've seen pricing all over the board. So this is just construction costs. Keep in mind, with all of these projects, we do have the architectural and engineer costs as well as all of the furniture fixture and equipment that goes along with these particular budgets. So we are asking for approval this evening on this particular, these projects as we do all bond projects so that we can get the projects moving forward and get going on construction.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shaw. The recommended action is that the board approve the construction bids as presented. Do I have a motion? Motion from Board Member Thomas Tate. Do I have a second? A second from Board Member Brunner. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, what was the, what was the budget?
The overall budget?
For each, each of these, or they came in at 4.7. What do we budget for them?
We, the construction was budgeted at about $4,500,000. So that which was the $405 a square foot is what we budgeted, and so these are about $700,000 in construction over what we budgeted.
And we were over on?
Mann and Wilder was even higher than that. Yeah. So as it's trending right now, based on, we do have inflation that we build into each of these cost estimates. And so the Pittman and Watkins are trending to be within the budget because of that inflation dollars that we put in there, as well as we, we budget 20% of hard costs for our soft cost. And so we haven't been spending as much there, so that's helping to absorb that. But the Mann, Wilder, and now Cowden and Holland will most likely be over what the original cost estimate was for those particular projects.
Can, can you follow up with, in an email format, on these projects, approximately how much over we are? Some simplified form of this was our budget and this is where they've come in, and this is where we're at.
And that will also be part of the quarterly bond update at the February 27th meeting. I'll make sure that there's a slide there on that as well, but yep, that's not a problem.
Isn't, I don't recall. Is Navigate involved in these projects too?
They are not.
Travis, can I ask a quick question? So in terms of the $220 million umbrella for the bond, is this going to jeopardize all, in any way, do you think, the ability to complete all the projects? How much fat was built into it?
Well, remember that at the $220 million bond issue, we had 20 million that was not even devoted to anything. We've earned 12.3 million in premium when we sold the bond, so there's 32 million in cushion right now that has not been designated to anything. So we will have, the REED bid will be presented to you at the next meeting on the 27th. And so based on Navigate's estimates at this point, overall, that project will come in significantly under budget as far as the total budget. We're trend, the construction costs are trending to be about what we estimated. But again, keep in mind, we do factor in a 6% inflation cost in our estimates, and so that's well over 3 million for that particular project. And I think the last estimate we received from Navigate was like 600,000 that they're estimating in inflation. And then we do budget 20% in soft costs, and previous bond, that was about 16% that we came in at. We left it at 20 because of inflation, but we're still not seeing that hit that 20%. So those things that we're seeing right now, we're, that is trending under budget as well. So.
Okay, so we're not even eating into the 32 million cushion because of the under-budget, some of the other projects coming under budget?
If REED comes in under budget, the answer to that is no. If REED doesn't come in under budget, and let's say it's on budget, completely 100% on budget, then these overages that we're seeing will then eat a little bit into that. But they're, they're the smallest of all of our projects, so it's not a significant amount in the grand scheme of 220 million.
And the design costs came on budget for these two gymnasiums?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just the construction. Okay. And then that's it, right? After this, there's no more? It's just, because they don't have a lot of soft costs, do they?
There's not a lot of FFNE costs, no.
Right, because it's, they're gymnasiums.
It's mostly the, the furniture that we purchased for the store, for the stage, for that classroom, as well as any IT equipment that we have, so it's not significant.
So the bleachers would be part of the heart?
Part of the construction.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second that the board approved the construction bids as presented, and we'll go ahead and vote at this time. The motion that the board approved the construction bids as presented passes seven-nothing. Moving on to item 9.01, our superintendent's update.
Today, we honored our teacher proud Tuesday educator for February. Ellen Scanlon is a cross-categorical, a special education teacher from Jared Middle School. So thank Ms. Scanlon for her dedication and devotion to our students. Last week, I had the opportunity to put on my sequin dress. When you can wear a sequin dress to work, it's a good day. And I attended Mann Elementary's growth gala as it relates to their Galileo growth, and so we danced in our fineries and just had a great time. So special recognition to all those students that made, met their growth goals in Galileo and for allowing me to wear my pretty silver sequin dress. Check it out on Twitter or whatever it is called these days. Last Friday, First Lady Parsons visited Studio Alternative School, and she met with students in our JAG program. JAG stands for Jobs for Americans Graduates, which is an innovative program that helps students develop skills, financial literacy, and leadership experience in high school. Want to thank her for her visit. And then on February 3rd, we had over 200 students participate in our Title I math contest. And so students joined us from Bingham, Bissett, Boyd, Cowden, Fremont, Twain, McGregor, Pittman, Robertson, Watkins, Weaver, Weller, Westport, and York. The theme was mathematicians are made, not born. And they also, it centered around a soccer theme. It's part of our S U, SPS United. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Dr. Lathan. That leaves us to Board Member comments, item 10.01. Are there any Board Member comments at this time?
I do have some comments if nobody else. Did you say you were, Scott? Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead. I didn't mean to jump in there.
I just wanted to do a quick shout out to Kelly Byrne, our Board Member Kelly Byrne, and the Kickapoo basketball team for being inducted in the Missouri Hall of Fame. Congratulations on that. Well done.
Thank you. I think that's why I'm extra fired up tonight. Little adrenaline.
Okay, okay. Board Member McCoskey?
Go Chiefs. No, I really want to talk a little about discipline here. I brought a prop with me that's going to be part of this. It's really more of just pontificating a little bit and then maybe some suggestions that we as a board or the superintendent and the administration might take up. And I, I want to talk about discipline doesn't begin at the doorsteps of Springfield Public Schools. I think discipline begins at home with the parents and their guardians. I think it's extremely concerning to me that our district is faced with handling discipline issues. I know it's nothing new, but I think that they should be addressed by parents and guardians before a child actually arrives at school. A little bit proactive part on the parents. I think positive behavior intervention support should begin at home. Conscious discipline should begin at home. Moreover, our district should not be allocating funds to social, emotional, and behavioral learning. We should be using the hard-earned stakeholders' dollars to ABCs and 123s. Nevertheless, Dr. Lathan and your employees, they're faced with no choice but to deal with the behavioral issues. Because students, I think in general, lack discipline from the home front. And I'm not, I don't want to say this in a broad brush that all the parents like that. There's, parents mean well, but sometimes I think we're just a babysitting service. That's just the way I would describe it. And we end up dealing with a lot of the problems of behavior when the home should be handling it. Director of Communications, Stephen Hall, stated in a news media source, if I remember, on KY3 that things that happen in school is a microcosm of society, and there's a lot of truth to what Stephen Hall stated. Nevertheless, I believe our district can potentially do more to rein in discipline for our district. And first, I'd like to encourage Dr. Lathan to have a zero-tolerance cellphone use within the classroom. Second, I would encourage board members to begin a dialogue. I brought a prop with me here, and that dialogue would be corporal punishment. I think it's something that we should talk about. I think it's, I believe that it could be used as one of our tools, as part of our discipline guidelines on where it could be actually inserted in part of the steps with regards to discipline. Our current policy, JGA-2, which is our corporal punishment policy, is just basically a cookie cutter from MSBA. I had contacted a district that has corporal punishment. Not to get into a lot of the discussion, but I think MSBA, in fact, I'm going to write the letter to MSBA on my, from me, that MSBA needs to create a corporal punishment policy, not just one-sided, meaning that if a school district is to actually pursue a corporal punishment policy, then MSBA ought to come up with some guidance on that rather than just stating in a policy that there is no corporal punishment. There are a lot of districts in the, in the state of Missouri that use it, and I think that we ought to take that under consideration as a board. I would be an advocate for, advocate for policy of a student disrupting the class to a degree that the student is a distraction and our educators are unable to do their job in which they are hired. The student be immediately removed from the classroom, and that parents come to the school and take the student home. Removing that distraction will help educate the rest of the students within the classroom and not be a distraction. I would be an advocate for a district-wide safety and discipline stand-down to address students and staff together the need to be respectful, considerate. Violence and assault will not be tolerated, and should a student act out, immediately repercussions will result. Violators will be dealt with swiftly and appropriately, and this stand-down should be conducted in an assembly format. Those are four suggestions that I want us to consider and take up down the road as a board and as a district. Just take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further board comments at this time?
I have a few. I, I printed up this week the weekly update that we received from Dr. Lathan, and I was just reminded again of how much this district is doing as a collective body to really support our staff, our students, our families. As I look down through here, there was an update on health services. Goodness knows, health services is a lifeline. Our school nurses, it, they're acting as, you know, frontline healthcare workers out in some of our schools because of lack of resources in other places. The choice programs, I read with interest that, you know, the, the people seeking a position on the Board of Education are all in favor of that. That's been my position always, as anyone that listens to me knows. There's a section in here on career and technical education, a lot of information, information on here on the International Baccalaureate Program, college access, work-based learning and student experiences. And it just, it just goes on and on, curriculum, intervention, and assessment. And I'm just, I'm just reminded again of how comprehensive of a program that we have here in Springfield that's for everybody. And a special shout out to counselors. National Counselor Week was February 5th through the 9th. Goodness knows, they, they are helping everyone out in the school building. They not only help the children, they help the parents, and they help the staff. And if you think that staff don't go in there and share their hearts with the counselors, they're, they're doing a tremendous work out in our building. So thank goodness for that. I wrote down your four suggestions, and the cellphones are an issue. I'm not going to say that they're not. So what the district decides to do with that, I don't know. I'll, I'll wait and see. As far as corporal punishment? As far as corporal punishment is concerned, I served as many years as a principal, and I thank the good Lord, no one ever expected me to hit a child. And that's just the truth. I could not have done it. I peddled my own at home. I couldn't have done it in a school setting. I could not. I'm not exactly sure what you meant by district-wide stand-down, although you went on and explained it was an assembly. I will tell you that my experience in working with a large audience like that and trying to get that information communicated, that would probably be one of the least effective ways to really spread the message. I'm not saying the message isn't worthy of being spread, but a school-wide assembly, there's just a lot that goes on trying to hold the attention of a large group. I've never, in all of my years, ever met a parent that does not love his or her child. They do. They don't all parent the way I might hope, but, but parents do love their children. And so we have to meet people where they are in that regard. I had the privilege of attending the P T A Founder's Day banquet recently, and I was, I was reminded again of all that our wonderful parents do in supporting the schools through P T A. And the Volunteers of the Year were recognized, and, and, you know, just the clothing bank alone over at Studi is amazing, and how those volunteers come in and do all of that. So I thank all the volunteers, and it was a privilege to attend the Founder's Day banquet. I've been doing that for many years, and I continue to be impressed. I also appreciate the fact that we had, well, I didn't appreciate the fact we had another snow day, but on the other hand, I am glad that the decision had been made in the recent past to go ahead and pay support staff for that. I'm sure they appreciate it, because that has been a change with the coming of Dr. Lathan. So we'll see. I have one more request, should we, and it kind of goes back to one of the topics, and I'm going to wrap it up, in regard to surveying teachers and principals about the technology. Perhaps, as I reflect on, you know, the conversation here, perhaps it doesn't need to be an either-or kind of survey. Do you want it one-to-one, or do you want it not at all? Maybe it should be, how might you implement it? Is it, can we implement it effectively? If it is one to two, or one to four, whatever that might be, and really dig down into what we might be able to make it work, what we, what we might be able to do to make it work. I think that would be important to know. So that's it. Congratulations to all the employees that hang in there and stay with us every day, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further question, or comments from board members?
I'll make a quick one. Mr. Makoski, just in response to just at least one of the things that you said, I appreciate your just statement of support for removing cellphones from the classrooms. I certainly agree with that, and I will probably be as bullish as anyone. I think my stance would be, from bell to bell, they should not be seen. And if they are, there should be consequences. I don't think it's our job to police them in terms of putting, locking them up, or putting them in bags, or whatever, but I think we have some schools that are doing it successfully in the district, and the feedback that I hear from that is positive. So I'll just be happy to go on the record and say, from bell to bell, they should not be seen. And if they are, we should be consistent with the consequences to that.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I wasn't going to make any, but I'll weigh in on that. I think one of the things that our students, just the young, are struggling with, I mean, I'd say adults struggle with this, it's hard having seven bosses. And that's what we're asking of students. And executive skills are becoming more and more difficult because of so much reliance on screens, and because, let's face it, we all love our children, but generationally, we're just doing more and more for kids, right? The generation of the 80s Lashkey kids and all that is bygone era. I was a Lashkey kid. But we want to support our students. And I think having a, I understand the value in empowering our teachers and buildings and having different cellphone policies, but I think uniformity in policy would help students comply, and I think it would just help them learn more. They have access to Chromebooks, all of our students do. And that allows them for some of the communication pieces that we think we're taking away. So there is that still, right? They have emails, they have Canvas. You can Canvas your parents, you can email your parents on Canvas. So there are a lot of options that we don't talk about in terms of communication. And perhaps the most important thing about not having a cellphone, and this is something that I hope that Mrs. Brunner will agree with me, it's hard to even talk about it, but it is possible that something truly horrific happens in one of our schools. And I think that we have to be prepared for that. And the best way that we can ensure that our students are safe is that they do not have personal cellphones, because it becomes chaos. And you want the teacher to be the authority figure, the teacher that has been trained, that has gone through the safety training. You want one person telling the students where to go, duck down, exit through the window. I don't know what it is, but what we don't need is 15 different parents and friends and cousins, I fear, for the safety of our students. So I think from a physical safety standpoint, this is, so when I'm out in the community, and this is broached, this is one of the reasons parents talk about why they want their student to have a cellphone, because what if something happens? And my response is, yeah, exactly. What if something happens? Precisely why we need to have one commander, and that's the teacher in the classroom. So just, that's something else I want you to put it on the back burner and think about it, and I'd love to chat with you about that.
Any thoughts?
And I'm sorry, real quick, one thing I forgot to mention, I meant to add on to that statement about cellphones. I, I hope that these sorts of things that we're talking about get some way incorporated into the comprehensive technology plan, what the vision is for cellphones across the district. I think that is a great place for it to be, and for us to communicate that to the stakeholders across, and the students, everyone across the community.
I would like to start with acknowledging Dr. Lathan's leadership in bringing Galileo and increased progress monitoring to the district. Today's presentation highlighted the significance of celebrating growth and student performance. And that data platform and that, that program has, was demonstrated as a useful tool for making sure that we are making data-driven decisions for student learning in the classroom. So I want to thank you for that program. I also want to shout out Esther Hahn from Boyd Elementary, who won third place in the math competition that was held recently. And finally, I wanted to end with addressing the Legislative Platform Policy B I that talks about the board as an agent of the state must operate within the bounds of state and federal laws affecting public education. If the board is to meet its inherent responsibility to the residents and students of the community, it must work vigorously for the passage of new laws designed to advance the cause of good, schools, and for the repeal and modification of existing laws and to feed this cause. To this end, the board will act accordingly as follows. First, seek both direct and indirect representation of its positions on pending legislation with appropriate state and federal legislators and legislative committees. I think this board has done this by hiring a lobbyist who is doing that for us, as well as board members who continue to participate in the process through communication with our legislators. I, I think that is something that we are doing. It says, second, to be knowledgeable of the annual legislative platform of the Missouri and National School Board Association, which I think we have done. All of our board members have regularly participated in the Misha, the M S B A programming that shares some of that information. And the final one is work for the achievement of legislative objectives through the Missouri and National School Boards Association with other, and with other concerned groups. I think this board has done its due diligence with regards to that. And this last, this document was last adopted on 1/22/2013. It definitely needs to be updated. We no longer even are a part of the National School Board Association. Nonetheless, in a different time and place, when the board was more aligned with regards to how it felt about how public education should be run in this state or in the city in this district, when there's more alignment, I think it's easier for us to, to support different legislation, legislation as a board. But given the current state of our board with regards to its division on how to best address public education, I don't think it's appropriate for this board to participate in making those kinds of legislative decisions. And I stand, so I stand by the comments that I made previously. Also, I just want to, I just want to say that, you know, it's, with regards to discipline, it's hard for us, it's hard for me to really take seriously sometimes some of the comments that I hear regarding student discipline and expectations for zero tolerance, when we, as a board, have not even demonstrated civility and kindness and respect for one another, but we expect our children to do that, and yet, at this very board, we don't demonstrate that on a regular basis. So again, I, you know, know that this board will be having soon a board session to discuss some internal board trainings and things, and I think that's something that we need to continue to consider, you know, how we, how we govern. We don't get to individually decide how we're going to govern. We govern as our board norms and our board standards state. We don't get to just arbitrarily decide, I'm going to do it my way, and you don't get to tell me how to do it. We do have order, and we do have expectations for how orders should be done in our meetings, yet we don't follow them, yet we want students to follow rules, and we want to legislate from this particular seat how students are to behave, yet we don't behave in a way that is at all kind or at all respectful. So I would just challenge our board to continue to evaluate itself as we continue to make loud noises about how students should be formed in the classroom and behave in the classroom that we would look at ourselves. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us to upcoming meetings, item 10.02. We do have a meeting next week on February 20th, a board workshop slash board self-evaluation. And we have an individual, whose name escapes me right now, who will be joining us next week to assist with that. Pardon?
Kathleen Whitaker.
Thank you. Kathleen Whitaker.
Does it have 4:30?
I would have to check. Yes, 4:30. And then we will have our regular board meeting on February 27th with an executive session prior to that time. Our final recommended action this evening, item 11.01, is that the board adjourn. Do I have a motion? Motion from Board Member Thomas Tate. Do I have a second?
Yes, I can.
Second from Board Member Kreis, and at this time, we will vote.
I actually pulled down.
Okay.
Aye.
The motion that the board meeting adjourn passes seven, nothing.